Thanks, Kees. So I am Dion Strutter, county manager, and will be presenting to you an update on FTE requests from 2025. Olson might be on his way up, so we moved the schedule, so hopefully he's able to join us. Apologies if he joins us a little bit late. So just as a reminder, you know, last year, it's part of the normal budget process. Departments made a number of requests related to new FTE to be included in the 2025 adopted budget. We'll be talking about the background on sort of what the status of those requests is from last year. Sharing a little bit of information just defining what kinds of positions we are approving. And I know you've had some questions in the past about, you know, what is a project funded position? It looks like reviewing the current list of requests that were started last year. And then we'll talk a little bit at the end about some of the mid-cycle requests that we've received since then. And the status of those going into the next budget cycle. I also want to just highlight, you know, we've been making a lot of efforts to really beef up our information that we're sharing about some of these requests. In the past, you might have seen just a spreadsheet of proposed approved FTE. And this is kind of the first time that we're taking this step and doing a review of all of the positions. So we definitely can adapt it as needed, but you know, we're part of our efforts to add more transparency to the budget process. Make sure that you can see all of the requests. Or have a chance to ask questions about those. So. Want to point that out.
Your people are here, by the way.
All right. So just a little bit of background here. As I mentioned, during the fiscal year 2025 budget development process, departments submitted requests for all of their budgets, including any FTE that departments had identified that they thought they would need in this fiscal year. The total that were requested last year, this was about a year ago when those requests came in, was 68.75 FTE that were originally part of the budget request process. And then in the fall, you may recall that we were starting to project some declines in property tax revenues and also some uncertainty about some of the projections for our revenues going into 2025, as well as some uncertainty with, starting to hear about some uncertainty with the federal budget and the impact that would have on our projections for 2025. And the county manager made the recommendation in the fall to hold off on approving any new FTE for 2025 until we had a better sense of what's happening with our revenues and what we can actually fund and support for FTE. At that time, we committed to come back at the end of the first quarter and revisit the FTE requests. But administration took their seats in January, adding further uncertainty at the time to our projections and also just some understanding about what the future of some of our programs and services might look like. And so we agreed in March that we would push that back again to the, to the second quarter to review all of the FTE requests that were previously submitted last summer for the 2025 budget year. So when our budget was adopted in January, it was adopted without any new FTE being added. And we had kind of a placeholder for FTE requests as we worked to further analyze the revenues and our, and our needs. Cameras in front of me. Yeah. And then also just for background, just a reminder, we have subsequently had a couple of mid-cycle requests that have come in in addition to the requests that we received last year. You may remember that we had a presentation from both the district attorney's office, where you approved the addition of 14 FTE primarily related to the county taking on domestic violence cases from the city of Aurora. So those were already approved. Those are the only FTE that had been approved so far in 2025. Eight FTE in the district attorney's office, six FTE in the sheriff's office. So those are already, already done and are not part of this. This presentation is really just those requests that we received last year that were, right, closed out. And we do want to finish out the 2024 budget process as we go into next year's budget planning process. So really looking forward to closing this out and giving our departments some more clarity as they prepare their new budget requests for 2026.
And just to add on to that, the 14, these 14 positions, we haven't officially adopted them yet. We've approved them in study session, but they'll come through on our second amendment. They'll be on there. They'll list as, we've created them, you've already approved them, but they haven't officially been adopted into the budget.
I did have a quick question. And it was after the presentation. So the district attorney and the sheriff came on the same day. The district attorney had mentioned funding certain positions for the remainder of the year. Is that not included here? And when we, is that something that can come back to the board? Is that, would that carry through starting in 2025? Like I forget his, and you don't need to answer that today, but.
Yes. And so there, there was another request from the district attorney, DVHRT positions for those that he is going forward to you all. So that's another sort of off-cycle request that we are contemplating. That funding for those positions expires in September, and so the district attorney had promised to come back, bring those back in front of you because those are grant-funded positions that the funding needs to be discussed with, with all of you for those four positions. They weren't included in the request from last year, but they are on the list.
Okay. Thank you, Dion.
And as we're talking about FTE and how the county defines those, there's three major buckets of FTE designations that we utilize that have different impacts to our budget and also impacts to the employees who are hired in those positions. Most common, the greatest majority of positions we have are what we call regular FTE. Those can be either full-time or part-time positions. They are eligible for benefits and those are permanent positions. They don't have a expiration date or term ending date. Those are, you know, added to our operating budget for the year going forward. So when we approve those regular FTE, they do permanently become part of our operating expenses. We have project designated or PJF positions. Those are temporary positions that are authorized for specified project period. Sometimes the project can be associated with a specific grant. Sometimes it's a, you know, initiative that has an end date to it, but those are designed as temporary positions or not permanently added to our, our operating expenses. They may be full or part-time. They are eligible for most benefits. And those positions typically expire when the project ends. I mean, again, it could be the grant ends, it could be when the major project comes to an end. Those positions are intended to be, to expire unless you decide to make them permanent in a future request, which does occur. And then we have actual temporary positions. Those can be seasonal or on-call positions. The benefits really depend on the number of hours worked and the duration of time worked. There's, you know, different benefit eligibility depending on the type of position. Most of our seasonal positions are for things like our parts and open space positions. Fair positions, we also have on-call positions that as needed, we can call on those employees to come and work for a short period of time, but they aren't permanent positions. There's no expectation that they are permanently added to our FTE account. All right. So before we entered into this process to close this out, we did ask all of our departments to take another look at the requests that they had submitted back in 2024. A lot of conditions have changed, a lot of programs have, have changed. And, you know, our budget outlook is a little flatter. And so we asked everyone to reprioritize and make sure that the list that we received last year was still relevant and current as we look at closing this out. And we also wanted to make sure that we were prioritizing the remaining asks that we have, that they're aligned with our county and board priorities. Supporting public safety is high priority for all of our, our positions. Operational sustainability, just making sure that we have sustainable funding for those positions and also that the program or service is sustainable for those positions. And then again, looking at the prioritization from each department as they looked at their list. I do want to give kudos to our departments for really working hard and being thoughtful about this. The original request was 68.75 FTE. And what we're presenting today, the final list, was actually narrowed down quite a bit to 28 FTE that departments had left after they looked at their list and resubmitted those requests with a potential budget impact, including both salary and benefits of $3,429,664.89. We had a number of departments that worked hard to look at what positions they might be able to hold off until 2026 to support. If there's alternative funding that can continue those positions. But also we had some significant changes from public health and human services as they're going through their process, really evaluating what the future looks like, to really think about the type of new FTE that they were requesting. And they ended up pulling back all of their requests as a lot of analysis, getting ready for 2026. And it doesn't make sense to add a large number of new FTE when they're also trying to reanalyze their projections for 2025. So we may see some requests from public health and human services for next year's budget process for 2025. Think to take those off the list. And as you can see, the majority of the remaining requests are the ones that have been presented by the sheriff's office. And we have a few, few others on the list. I'll just go through the recommendations one by one for each department. We have in the assessor's office, one real estate tech, one, we are recommending that we approve that position. And, you know, if you want more details of any of these positions, please let me know. Packer here, I know the details. And as you can see, we are recommending approving most of these. We've done a lot of work to get to the right list, and I think we feel pretty comfortable with it, but happy to answer questions. On community and economic development, and they had a significant reduction in their ask and really highly prioritizing a field engineer, senior field engineer, who will be working on a number of high priority projects in coordination and community and economic development. We are recommending approving one regular FTE for that department. Community safety and well-being. We've had some discussion about these positions that were originally grant-funded and initiated as part of our homeless navigation services within the poverty reduction unit. And we know that we have some work coming up to really analyze the, the PRU unit's work and what kind of support we need for homelessness services and continuing some of these navigation services. And our ask is to extend these project-funded positions through the end of 2026. We do anticipate that one or more of these positions, we are hoping to make permanent. And that we'll be discussing that in the 2026 budget process, what the right layout is for those homeless navigation services. But to give some certainty to those employees and some less anxiety about positions that have expired funding.
To be clear, these four people are already here.
Yes.
Is it, is it a request for continuing funding?
These are not new FTE, you heard, project-funded positions that have term dates coming up that we'd like to extend through.
Another quick question.
Sure.
What does, um, the data, data analyst do differently at the department level versus like, is it the SIT team? What, what team is it? Yeah. So I also understand that's data, something, collection, something.
Quite a bit of data analytics and data gathering. And it's actually a conversation we've been having about how we coordinate amongst all of the sort of data positions and the information that they're gathering within the homeless, that's in poverty reduction unit within CSWV. Our data analyst is really tasked with, all of the point and time data, all of the outcome evaluation data related to our homelessness program initiatives that we have, like our encampment resolution and some of those. And it's very specifically tied to the work CSWV related to the poverty reduction unit activities. A lot of data that they've been tracking, which probably is clear that can share and teach some of our, our city mess there. Working through with their data gathering, but it really is related specifically to the PRU work and all of the vast amount of data related to our homelessness survey and programming.
Yeah. The only other thing I would add is that was the team that introduced the million dollar block to the, how do we look at data differently to determine how our services need to address geographic differences in investment as well as other things? And so all of that data that you all saw from million dollar block and moving, addressing homelessness up the river, as we keep saying, that came out of this position.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I think two, if not three departments, two for sures, one was relocated, were brought on by the former county manager. And I think it was the SIT team that specifically, I understood with central, centralizing data and management analysts as a team that would be mobilized to go and help departments. So I'm confused on every department or departments having their own data analysts. And how does that tie back to like the mothership of, and where is the boundary of, we're duplicating work? I mean, I think I've heard in a previous meeting that, you know, the data analysts and the SIT team, they still have what I understood as some needed experience as far as runways to where they're proficient. So how, how are these working together? I mean, I understand the departmental data, but what is this, what is the goal of the SIT team? If we're continuing to fund department data analysts at the department level?
Well, and I, I would love to kick it off and we'll tag team this one. But there were two departments that were employing their own analysts. And as we were setting up the SIT team, this one, which was launched out of ARPA, and it was really to help us develop how we review services generally for those populations that had not been fully served historically. And so that lessons learned profile is being integrated into what we're doing with the SIT team currently. And SIT is generally intended to be a centralized space that acts as a consultant to all of our departments and frankly offices as well to pull those data needs together in one place, but also to project manage and to assist them with change management. And there's a lot of wonderful services that they're able to provide. So we do anticipate that this position that goes through 26, which as I remind everybody, is the end of ARPA fully. So those things will be integrated there. The other was in human services. And those pieces of data are required in order for those pass-through dollars federally and at the state level. There are a huge number of KPIs that must be tracked at all times in order to continue to receive those dollars. So that traditionally has been the case for many, many years for that specific funding source. So I would anticipate that that would continue forever, essentially, as long as we have human services, God willing. And that we will continue to bring those lessons learned to the centralized group as well, but that those folks would be stationed there, much the same as we have finance folks and IT folks supporting that very large job of that.
That are embedded as well.
That's correct. Yeah, I agree. That the human services analytics, to Alicia's point, are pretty complex. And there's a lot of regulatory requirements of the human services that I don't think the SIT team is well situated yet to fully take on or would fully take on. Long-term vision is for the, the SIT team to be centralized, to centralize all of our data management, our guidelines around data, whether it's, you know, collecting data, analyzing the, and for, but how we are developing and deploying, using that data, that that is the long-term vision for where SIT will have a role and, and is situated in the county manager's office. I think there's some work to do to get SIT to that point, to be able to take on those fully. As well as, you know, to Alicia's point, these positions started with ARPA and really have been, I would say, kind of exploratory and sort of innovative when it came to deploying those ARPA funds. But to your point of not duplicating services, that's why we, we aren't recommending yet that we make these positions permanent. We do have some work specifically from ARPA that we are wrapping up. We do have a lot of great bones new to that work that has already started. But it's not our recommendation yet to make any of these positions permanent. And as part of that further discussion that we're going to have about really what the overall spectrum of homelessness services are looking like and what the right sizing is for the positions that support those. And so that's why I say, I anticipate that we'll be talking about this more as we go into the 2026 budget process of really like long-term, where we want these positions to land, if we want them to continue beyond the end of ARPA.
I appreciate that. Um, what I'm hearing is a lot of grant support. And you know what Commissioner Prentice brought up earlier today was this very real potential fall off the cliff moment with the federal administration policy. And so we're providing service delivery at a very high level now because we're, we've been well-funded. We've been very good with our funding, ARPA and otherwise. Is that this fall off the cliff moment is that we're going to, we're going to see real, in real time, so service delivery impact to the public. So I appreciate, um, the SIT team and that the county does use data in order to inform decisions. I guess I'm looking for proficiency, like when are we proficient? And before you all started, Dion, and I think Kristen was here, but, um.
We should, we should maybe pause it and like wait till we can resume.
Oh, till Kathy gets back.
Because Kathy has to do her interview with the, the gov team.
Time.
It is time. So everyone send Kathy good vibes for her RAC interview.
We're going to take a quick recess.
Yeah, 30 minutes. Regional Air Quality Commission.
We will jump back in. I know we've got some guests waiting for our next session. So we'll, we'll get through these last couple of slides, just bringing us back to, we're reviewing the 2025 FTE requests that were submitted last year by departments and making recommendations for moving forward with those. And as I get started here, I did want to ask Kristen, just talk a little bit of, we're kind of closing out the conversation about our data analyst and the SIT team of, you know, really kind of the longer-term vision of where we're going. And just acknowledging that there's a lot of work coming from SIT and is looking at their scope and span and what makes the most sense when it comes to where we have support for data and analytics and governance, either within departments or centralized, if that is the conversation that's ongoing. And we'll be talking about a lot more as we get into planning some of the other things we have coming. So let Kristen talk about that a little bit, and then if it's all right with you, we'll move on to the next one.
Sure. Um, so I've been talking to Dion a little bit about this and also to the SIT team, Jamal Ward in particular. But just we think there are some opportunities to look at how we utilize SIT going forward, looking at models of what other local governments do. Particularly, you might be familiar with Peak Academy in Denver. Similar group embedded kind of in their budget finance team. And SIT's always been focused on performance management, and I think that's a really good place to lean in. They've also done a lot of work on process improvement in various departments that have needs like that. So I think there's a way to utilize them to find those efficiencies and find ways to be more effective and reduce duplication and overlap and things like that. And so as we move forward, Dion has relationships with some of those other local governments that have teams like this. And so we've been talking about learning what's out there. I think we can acknowledge my, what was the initial purpose of creating SIT, but we can also look at what's our organizational need now and what would be the best way to utilize that team? And how do we position them to be effective and to address some of the needs that we hear identified from the board, from the community and things like that? So that's generally, and Dion, feel free to add to that, but.
No, I mean, I think that's right. Data analytics is one aspect of what the SIT team was conceived to do, but there's a lot of opportunity. And I think to, and Kristen's point earlier, when we're talking about how are we utilizing our resources? How are we looking at proficiency, process and ultimately service delivery? I, I do think that we've got some things started with SIT, but there's a lot more that we can beef up and some models that I'm interested in developing with SIT that I think will provide a lot more support to all of our departments as we're all navigating, you know, coming. But that is on deck for SIT. And, and as I mentioned, with the positions that we have right now, part of the reason that we are recommending extending these PJF positions rather than making them permanent now is because that work is ongoing. We're still kind of level setting where that all should land. So.
Thank you. Can I ask a follow-up question about that? I really appreciate that. I think that's really the right approach. When will we hear that back? Because I think that we always encourage, I'm going to get that up. I think we agree that it is best practice for every department and frankly, every unit in every department to have some sort of data utilization for building efficiency for how we use resources, how we deploy resources, bang for your buck, return on investment. We expect this from every level of government, there's some analysis on those factors. And so when would we expect some follow-up from y'all about the difference between having a distinct unit that does data analysis, policy analysis work versus like in your small department of five people? Please be thoughtful on return on investment of what you're doing with your work and use, use your data effectively. What's the difference between those two things? And when do you guys think you'll bring that back and share some of your learnings and advice for the future?
So there's, yes, we'll see.
Good question.
Two weeks' time coming up that we're, we'll start to see that. So part of it is in my own plan, short-term plan, by the end of the summer, we'll be having some of these conversations that Kristen mentioned with a few folks about what this could look like as far as how SIT is positioned in the work. We also have our budget process that we have engaged in when we've talked with our teams as we launch the budget, you know, that we really are looking for good evaluation of every budget request and making sure that our business cases are strong and really articulate the best use of our resources, you know, that we're being smart about our spend. So as part of the budget process and developing those budget requests going into next year, we'll be having more of those conversations. And then, you know, when a couple of the strategic goals that we developed during, how we're developing that framework, then that's another piece, I think we're. To map out the deployment of those strategic goals that you all helped to know and share a couple of weeks ago. That's another, another aspect that we're going to be bringing. I don't know the exact timeline for when we'll have that, that mapped out, but we're looking at it right now.
It'll be in the, in the material she'll bring back to us over the next few months. That works for me.
Great. All right. So moving on, we had one request that we're recommending to move forward with the coroner's office for death investigator assistant, one regular FTE. The district attorney's office, so they had a number of requests, and I mentioned it earlier. You've already approved eight new FTE related to the domestic violence caseload. And then there's four DVHRT separate program that are going to be coming to you soon. So those are also part of their package. And then looking at the FTE that were remaining, that were originally proposed in 2024, we're recommending moving forward with Family Justice Center Coordinator. We are definitely picking up speed on that project getting off the ground. The lead restitution technician, another one that the DA has expressed a lot of need for. And then the two at the bottom there that we're recommending, we wait until the 2026 budget request cycle. That's based on conversation with DA and the way that they prioritize their request after we asked everybody to review. Just given the other demands and other requests that you'll be looking at that came off cycle. We'll, we'll probably see those again as we get into the 2026 request process. Fleet and facilities management, again, the team worked really hard to identify what is the, the most urgent need that they have right now. And Ameren team have identified the security supervisor as a high priority, as well as two building maintenance techs who are actually at the detention center. So working through that long list of improvements, renovations. We're calling it at the detention center that we have more staff who are working through that long project list at, at the detention center and prioritizing those. We do recommend approving all three of those for fleet facilities management. We anticipate again, the 2026 process that will have a better sense of how many staff we need on the maintenance tech side. I know there were a few other requests. But for now, it's forward. And then the sheriff's office. And then the sheriff's office had a number of requests. In the next couple of slides, I'll talk about the requests we've received from the sheriff's office. You know, we've had a couple of study sessions with you all and looking at just really what is the need that the sheriff's team is requesting related to ongoing maintenance, related to ongoing caseload that we've been talking about. We have some needs in their back office, we're talking about IT support, that kind of thing, as well as new legislation that has come forward that is impacting the sheriff's office. So all of that is, you know, kind of at play here. From twenty before, the initial request that the sheriff's team made, we sat down and looked at all of the positions that had not been filled yet, as well as those positions, or excuse me, positions that have been approved yet, as well as those positions that were presented to you all. It's kind of a mid-cycle request in, and there's a number of changes that have been made. Either the sheriff's team has already pulled back on a position or they revamped the position or the position got rolled into that mid-cycle request. So I say all that because there's a number of different requests that we are working through from the sheriff's team. But from the 2024 requests that we received last year, we had fourteen remaining FTE that had not been approved. We're recommending approving twelve of those fourteen. You can see the list there, the biggest bulk of that is in staffing the detectives that the sheriff had requested. We also have some training needs. We've talked about the digital accessibility needs that the sheriff's team has as they are managing that independently from our overall IT digital accessibility work and need to be compliant, all of us, the next few weeks here, July first. We know that there are some gaps in our office of emergency management and the sheriff had asked for actually two emergency management coordinators. But after working with his team and kind of talking through how those positions can come on, we're asking for one now and then anticipate building that up next year even further, the emergency management side. And then the two that we are recommending, just go through the 2026 cycle and not move forward at this time. That's again, based on conversations with the sheriff as we look at the whole slate of requests, what really are the top priorities? The sheriff identified that these two probably are kind of a second tier request compared to all of the other needs that, that they have. So there are twelve FTE we're recommending to move forward with for right now. Bring old FTE requested for 2025 to 24. Four FTE all funded through general fund with an overall budget impact of $2,937,394.49, which is we are able to support in our operating budget. That's where we've landed after all of that analysis and stuff start. Just for comparison, looking back the last several years and how many FTE we funded and what requests have looked like. You can see that we, we've had some ups and downs when it comes to funding new FTE. Obviously during the pandemic, the number of new FTE that we funded was much lower. And then during post pandemic and also with the influx of ARPA dollars as well as standing up with the public health department, we've had a couple of years of much higher new, new FTE requests approved. But as you can see, last year, we approved forty-four and seven-five FTE. And this year, we're recommending twenty-four for, that it came from last year's request process. And we are flattening out a bit on our staffing and no going into 2026. That's probably where we're going to, what we'll be looking at in 2026. So just kind of comparison of what we've been approving over the last few years. I think this is pretty reasonable and in line with the growth in revenue that we've been anticipating. And also a lot of hard work on the teams to be really, you know, thoughtful and judicious about their request for a non-new FTE that we have to support with our general fund. And then moving into requests that have been received this year after the 2024 budget process. I mentioned earlier, those fourteen FTE that you all approved back in April related to domestic violence. We also received these thirty-one new FTE requests in May from the sheriff's office. You all, you know, probably recall the presentation the sheriff gave on just all of the new demands and pressures on the sheriff's office team and things that are kind of coming down the pipeline for the sheriff's team that have occurred in the last year. The ones that are shaded in gray are all included in the list that we just recommended for approval. So those with your approval are taken care of and will be funded. The ones that are not in gray are kind of what's, what's left from that list that the sheriff presented back in May that, you know, we still are working through analyzing what the impacts of some of this new legislation will be and kind of figuring out what's the right level of staffing for sheriff's team. Our recommendation is that we continue with the 2026 budget process to evaluate those mid-cycle requests that are not shaded in gray. But of course, you're, you're going to approve any of those right now if you'd like to. But we are still working on what do we think the real need is going to be? And also with the fifteen, sixteen positions that are coming through to give us and the sheriff a chance to bring on those FTE that we've just approved to see what impacts there are as we're getting more fully staffed. So that's, that's our recommendation at this time for those for me. We understand that and we're still advocating for. Get it right with that number of it. And I did just want to highlight there the overall FTE request in 2025 that we've had from the sheriff's office. We have had a number of presentations and some of the positions have, you know, been changed or added or taken off. Just so you can see where we're at right now with current request. And we do have new requests coming in as we work through the budget process. Business cases are due to the budget team by July third. So we'll have more coming in and be working through next few months with those new requests will be. And I anticipate anything that's not approved today will end up on the request with going into 2026. That is the presentation and we seek your approval to move forward with these FTE requests from 25.
Can you go back to the slide that shows the ones you're asking us to approve today, those twelve positions? Thank you.
This one?
Oh, I see. Oh, so that slide we were just on, that was also sheriff's office, that, that.
The last one.
The last one, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, so this is, but this is, so.
This is everybody.
This is everybody. Okay. Great. And so these are, these were requested, when did these requests first come to us?
These all came to us as part of the budget process last year.
Okay, so they were requested for 2025?
Yes. Normally our budget process, we would have made a recommendation for FTE as part of the budget adoption process. And this would have already been taken care of. But again, because we had some uncertainty, we paused in November with actually including those FTE and promised to come back, we reviewed it.
I'm sure you said that earlier, so thank you for your.
Re-scan.
Okay.
No, I really appreciate this. I had a lot of questions about the community safety and wellbeing, the data analysts, and I appreciate that it is being proposed or recommended that it's a project designated position. I think that gives us, it bridges us to the next budget funding cycle. And then we can still have the service covered, which I really appreciate. And I also see on here that it's salary and benefits. That was one question that I had.
Yes, this includes the total budget, so that would include benefits, which of course vary. But we have projections if it's included.
Yep. So I don't have any more questions.
I don't either, really. I did, because I looked at the slides last night, so I kind of had. So thank you very much.
So does this come in the budget amendments? How do we see these positions?
Or is this going to be on a public hearing?
Yeah, so if, if the board approves the positions, then we would bring that forward on our second amendment. So same thing that you mentioned earlier with eight, six ones. These would then get also included on those, on that second amendment, probably sometime September timeframe. We would bring that forward to the board.
Okay, I really appreciate that.
But we have traditionally allowed departments to start posting and recruiting before it's formally adopted on the amendment. So your approval today would give them that authority to start filling the position. And we'll notify them of that and then prepare for that. The first amendment is going to be the carry forward that we'll be discussing in a little bit here.
Okay, and just, I guess I do have a more question, just to clear, I think you already said this. The HRT, the District Attorney's Office, the HRT, it's HRT, I, I was.
DVHRT.
So I've, and some of the that, those positions, we did approve those already.
We did not, so the DA is going to be coming back to you to talk more about those positions. Have you kind of an overview of what those were? Those are the positions that funding is going to be expiring in September. What was already approved, I know it's confusing because they're both domestic violence related, but what was already approved?
Which is current work continuing as opposed to the DV high risk team, which when I attended events with the DA, does appear to be proactively saving lives, coordinating services. The strangulation risk, fatality risk alone has been pretty powerful to see that documentation. Talk about data analysis, pretty powerful to see that data analysis bear out.
And we do have that, we have the DA on our, on the upcoming agenda for that? Because September is coming fast, that's my concern.
I know, yes. Let's just talk to him about it, but.
Because that's, it's a little time sensitive.
Yeah, it is, yeah. He mentioned it last week, I don't recall the date that we discussed, but yeah, he's coming back with that.
Any more questions, Chair? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that?
Thank you.
Can we consider that proof with your?
Oh, yeah. In the study session way, continue on. Ellie Worth, what do we say?
From KDC Collaborative, who are our lead consultants on our development standards updates. Before I jump into that, I just want to give a kind of a really brief background of where we are today and how we got here. So as the board may recall, staff in KDC, KDC Collaborative previously presented to the board back in February on Module One. Module One really was focused on the residential zone districts and uses. And then today we'll be presenting on Module Two, which is more commercial and industrial. In addition to Module One, we also gave a brief overview of the community engagement that we had done to date. As they recall, we had engaged in a preliminary process from September of 2023 through April of 2024 that did a lot of the key engagements to feed the themes that we're working on today, continue to work forward. Worth noting that that wasn't one and done by any means, we are still continuing to do the engagement. In fact, we have a community engagements meeting on Wednesday of this week. We had our last one on, in February of last year. It will continue to do so going forward. This is a very iterative process, so today's feedback may have impacts on the Module One. And when we're on Module Three, we may have impacts on Module Two. So that's kind of how this is meant to be until we're done and final. There's always the possibility of kind of going back and seeing how things impact later things and revising those. So again, today's Module Two, we're going to be focusing on the commercial and industrial zone districts and uses. The agricultural zoning was, is part of Module Two, but we're going to break that out into a separate presentation for the board. Just realizing the amount of material to cover was pretty exhaustive of the time we have today. So that'll be a separate presentation by staff, not today, but that'll be in the next month or so for that. And again, today is really meant to be just an update of our process. We certainly welcome any feedback that the board may have on Module Two or anything else that strikes your mind. We do have a few specific points that we are looking for feedback on. We have a specific slide calling that out, and that'll be related to consolidation of our commercial zone districts as well as our outdoor storage. So with that, I will turn over to Brian to go ahead and kick us off.
Okay, thanks, Chase. So we will be going over, of course, the key changes to Module Two and just hitting a high level of Module Two's contents. Basically what Chase said with feedback and then next steps as far as the project and Maria and I's time here this week as well. So we are kind of squarely in the middle of this project here. As you can see on the timeline, looking forward, we will, our next big chunk of work is going to relate to environmental and sustainability standards as well as what we would just call kind of development standards, landscaping and parking and signs and things of that nature. The following step after that has to do, we call it processing governance. You could think of it as the review procedures, non-conformities enforcement. And then of course, looking forward to public review and adoption in mid, mid 2026. Several key themes that we have on the screen here for this module. And typically Module Two are the topics that we're talking about with the commercial and industrial districts. There, there's a lot of engagement and discussion, maybe a little less though than what we see normally for residential districts. Just kind of the nature of people thinking maybe kind of where they live versus where they shop or work. But still, there's definitely plenty to think about and discuss for Module Two, including, you know, consistency with the comprehensive plans, goals and recommendations. Conference, a project like this, one of the primary tasks is to look at what needs to change in the DSR, the standards, you know, the legally adopted standards of the DSR to make into reality the policies and kind of the dreams of the comprehensive plan. You know, there's a broad variety of things that the comprehensive plan recommends. Many of them are related to land use and the DSR is the, one of the vehicles for making those a reality. Best practices, our firm's been around since 1982. And so in that time, we've kind of learned a lot about what works in different places. And so we kind of bring that to the discussion as we work on this kind of draft. And functionality as well, you know, there's some changes that aren't going to be monumental. They're going to just be kind of tweaks and, and minor changes that just make the document more readable, more understandable. So that's a part of it as well. Continuation of the overlay districts, your current overlays, you have several of them. And those basically with, other than some minor wordsmithing, I would say, have carried forward into the Module Two draft. A bigger picture thing here is merging the commercials. Um, a bigger picture thing here is merging the commercial zone districts, C, C zero through C, uh, five. Um, that is kind of a lot of commercial districts just from what we see nationwide. Um, and so there are some thoughts we put into merging, uh, two at a time. Uh, so that going from six districts to three commercial districts. Um, along with that consolidating, um, permitted uses in those districts. Um, improving the livability and encouraging alternative forms of transportation is another one. Um, there is a key component of modules, really of the first three modules, um, called amenity spaces. Um, think of those as, um, open space plus some other stuff. Um, where, um, it's not just suburban and kind of rural that you think of for open space, but when there's a more urbanized context. Something like plazas or, or splash pads or other things like that that help to promote livability. But there are gathering spaces, you know, that aren't work and aren't home, or weren't, yeah, aren't work and aren't home, but a place to kind of socialize or recreate. Um, alternative forms of transportation as well, there's sort of a side, as you, as I'm sure you all know, more than just a side project that staff is handling with the community, um, or transit-oriented community initiative that the state has mandated. That sort of, um, um, uh, allows for and encourages, uh, other forms of getting around, um, through urban design. And so that, um, kind of touches on what we're doing in this module. Um, and then finally, um, improving the sense of community and place in the county. Um, uh, your conference that planned places value on not just micromanaging land uses, but with, um, more creating, um, desirable places and, um, having design standards that create character. And so that's what the, kind of the DSR needs to follow through with as far as the regulations that it, that it promotes. So, um, talking about merging the commercial districts, and we'll get into, um, some more detail on what those actual merge looks like in a second. But, um, some advantages of merging the commercial districts, um, making it more user-friendly for applicants and for staff, really, I would say also. Um, when there are a ton of districts that kind of, from an outsider at least, which is what a consultant is, kind of look very similar, it's hard to even tell the difference between, you know, for example, CO and C one. Sometimes they've got very similar uses down the board and similar dimensional standards, which is like setbacks and heights and things like that. That's a cue for us to think, well, um, is there room here to merge these two districts to, um, just simplify the, the document? Um, and make it easier for a property owner to understand and make it easier for staff to administer as well. Um, greater predictability and consistency when you are merging. Um, uh, it, it reduces the complexity again of the, of the, uh, DSR. So that, um, you can kind of make changes that are, you're not having to go through fifty different areas of the document to make those changes, they're sort of, um, more consolidated and, um, uh, less likely for inconsistencies and errors. Um, when there are a few, fewer zone districts, but that are also, those zone districts are, um, flexible. There, that can result in fewer rezoning requests, which is a, a basic kind of way of streamlining procedures. So that if a district, um, uh, accomplishes what a property owner wants to do with their property, but also protects surrounding property owners and makes the, the development an asset to the community. Then, um, uh, if that can be done without trying to rezone the property, then that's one step less that the applicant needs to go through to, um, get to the development they're wanting to do, which is, again, again, um, kind of streamlining. And then finally, you know, there could be some concern, I could imagine with, um, merging zone districts, thinking that, um, you know, suddenly, uh, a, a factory could inadvertently be allowed next to a single-family development or an apartment or something like that. But, um, we, we would be on the lookout for that for sure, for such a drastic thing like that and wouldn't want to advocate for that. But, um, when there are kind of changes in use between property, between properties, there are things that the develop, uh, the DSR can do. Um, like buffering, should have a, you know, sample image up there or height controls, um, that, um, can come into play to soften that transition when you're going from one, uh, district to another. So narrowing down a little more into the actual, um, merging particularly of the commercial districts. Um, as I, I mentioned, C zero and C one, merging those and the DSR into neighborhood commercial. And that impacts roughly ninety properties. Um, merging C two and C three into what we call general commercial, impacting about eighty-four properties. And merging C four and C five into heavy commercial, impacting many more, four hundred and eighty, um, properties, roughly. These are based on, you know, the, the records of the, um, county's, um, GIS. But when we do that, of course, you can imagine that there are certain choices that we have to make as far as what land uses would be allowed. If, if C zero, um, prohibits a use and C one is, calls that a conditional use, requiring a conditional use permit, then which one do you go with? And kind of generally speaking, we say err on the side of allowing the use. Um, uh, if, you know, if it makes sense and if the, um, we take it out, you know, like we're doing now to the general public and kind of get feedback. If, if that raises a red flag, if one of these mergers of uses kind of generates a red flag from people, then we definitely would reconsider it. But, um, looking at, um, these two hypothetical uses, one per, one prohibited and C zero and one conditional use, uh, permit and C one, then we would think to kind of merge those and make that a, a conditional use permit use in this new neighborhood commercial district that we're, that we're talking about. Um, so there's a, kind of a, several many dozens of uses that that could, um, apply to. Um, and that we'll want to hear, you know, eventually feedback in public on. Um, eventually this draft, like Module One, will be published, you know, online for, for public scrutiny. Um, industrial districts, we are not proposing to merge those. We did bat that around with staff and came to realize that, um, it would be better not to merge those. So there would still be the three I one, I two and I three, uh, zone districts that handle industrial use. And as I said again, just when we're looking at, um, the provisions and the, um, land use, um, allowances for districts. If they're very similar, then that's a good clue to consider merging them. I'm talking a little more about the neighborhood commercial district as one of the, um, districts that would be created with the merger of C zero and C one. Um, one thing that the creation of this district helps do is, um, uh, implement and forward the concept of the twenty-minute community that the conference of plan, um, has recommendations for. Um, some typical uses in a neighborhood commercial district there are shown on the screen. Um, convenience store, generally with, probably without fuel sales, without gas. Um, coffee shop, bakery, office, you know, these kind of land uses, um, if they're at a small enough scale are, um, often, you know, an asset to the neighborhood. So like, um, uh, a coffee shop, you know, most people would love to have a, a small-scale coffee shop um, uh, next door that maybe even does its own grinding of coffee at small batches, but they probably wouldn't want Folgers next door. Um, factory, you know, grinding twenty-four, seven millions of tons a day. Um, so it's all about scale for a neighborhood commercial district like this, where if it's some, small enough scale and the land use is right, then it's probably going to be a, a, a good thing. Um, some ways to control scale are with like maximum lot area, you know, uh, where most people are accustomed to minimum lot area. Um, but, um, having a maximum lot area can help to control the scale of a, um, use that's taking place. Um, same with floor area. Um, uh, some places have residential standards that call for a minimum square footage, uh, that the house needs to be. Um, but this would have a maximum floor area that the business would, would be able to be. Um, so that it would keep that scale, um, down, um, and control, you know, impacts on the surroundings. Uh, it would have maximum height, uh, standards as well, that would be sort of similar to residential thirty-five feet, generally speaking, two minute, two and a half stories, something like that. Um, and then just compatible development standards related that, that make the, the building a little like some of the samples you see there. Um, pitched roofs potentially, um, monument signs which are low profile, you know, not pole signs that are thirty feet tall with the skinny pole that the sign sits on top of. Um, sloping roofs could be part of it, um, and other things that sort of just make the, the development more, um, akin to its surroundings, which could be, you know, neighborhood, uh, residential developments.
Quick question, excuse me. When you say maximum height would be similar to residential, does that mean, uh, multifamily residential or how, how?
Oh, no, um, I should have more said maybe like, um, single or, or, or two-family or, um, not, uh, four stories or something that you can see with.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, could, could neighborhood commercial, uh, what, what are your thoughts on, you know, going above one, if you're, are you talking about a maximum of two stories or?
Like a, a kind of gold standard in my world is two and a half stories slash thirty-five feet for, uh, residents. Like a, a s- single family or two-family.
Okay, okay, so you, so if somebody, or would this, this would contain mixed use or no?
Um, this, there is a mixed-use district later, um, this is more, uh, geared for just purely commercial.
Okay.
That might be adjacent to or in the kind of general area of residential, but not like really integrated together like a mixed-use district.
Okay, thank you.
That, that actually answered my question, because a lot of even single-family home neighborhoods are thirty-five, the homes are thirty-five feet tall, so. Cool, thank you.
Okay, um, a few tables, um, that break down even more the, um, uh, proposal for the commercial districts. Um, and, uh, then Maria will talk about, um, industrial districts. So, uh, again, neighborhood commercial is C zero and C one. Um, there's that amenity space mentioned here that we went into with Module One. Um, we don't have a lot of, uh, space devoted to that in this presentation. But for the, um, posters at the, um, open house meeting tomorrow evening, um, there are a, a lot of posters and we are reminding the public with those posters kind of what we mean by amenity space. Um, which is again, kind of the broadening view of open space, so that it's also suitable for kind of mixed-use areas like uptown or other developments in the area that, that it wouldn't make sense to have a big, you know, natural area retained as part of the development. So, um, depending on the land use, ten to twenty percent, um, amenity space of the development. So this isn't lot by lot, as a reminder, it's for the entire, you know, um, center shopping center development and what happened. Um, the setbacks, uh, for C zero and C one would be similar, although the lot, the, the lot size, uh, maximum lot area and maximum floor area would be new, but generally speaking, like the building placement setback rules would be, um, the same or similar to C zero and C one. Um, and there's kind of at least one guiding strategy in the comprehensive plan, um, that we cite there about, um, having, um, uh, compatible transitions of land uses, uh, that, um, uh, kind of guide the decision to, to propose this. There are, um, again, at the, on the posters at the, um, presentation tomorrow evening, there's a little more detail, I would say, about, um, backup from the conference of plan, um, related to some of these decisions, but, um, for now, that's what we have for, for that one. Um, general commercial, so a step up from neighborhood commercial, but not quite heavy commercial, so it's in between. Um, uh, sort of your general bigger scale shopping centers. Um, this would come from a merger of C two and C three, um, about a twenty percent amenity space requirement, um, as part of, uh, the development. Um, and again, like with C zero and C one retaining those, um, dimensional requirements. This one would not have a, um, maximum, uh, lot area or maximum floor area. Um, just because it's not as, you know, geared to having smaller scale, uh, commercial. And that strategy mentioned there is, is, is the same as the, on the previous table. And finally, for, um, merging of commercial districts for heavy commercial, this would be a merger of C four and C five. Um, this has, um, uh, higher intensity, uh, potent, uh, uses that potentially could be a little more of a, uh, uh, potential for nuisance when, next to, um, residential. Um, but it's not quite light industrial either, so it's that gradation now between, um, general commercial and light industrial. Um, so you could think of contractor shops, um, sign companies, sign manufacturing companies, things like that that would make up this, this district. Um, but there also are kind of typical commercial uses as well. So there's a range of amenity space requirement from five to twenty, uh, percent, depending on if it's more of an industrial use that's not going to really need that much amenity space to more of a commercial use that would warrant more of it. Um, and again, ret- retention of the C four and C five, um, uh, setbacks, uh, generally speaking for this district. And finally, uh, I said finally for the previous one, but really finally for this table, uh, mixed use. Um, you have a current mixed-use district. Um, we've, um, adjusted the densities, uh, a, a little, I think, to, um, get closer to, um, uh, alignment with the, um, state recommend, or state mandate for density for the transit-oriented communities. There would be a different transit-oriented community district, um, as part of the staff initiative. Um, but, um, just adjusting these mixed use to be slightly more, uh, dense, um, to hopefully make them more attractive uh, for a developer to use. Um, having ten to fifteen percent amenity space, whether it's a non-residential or residential development. Um, uh, but this would be the district as asked about earlier, where there would be either what we think of as horizontal mixed use or vertical mixed use, mi- mixed use with horizontal being, um, kind of an integrated development, that the, they're, they're not contained within a single building, the, the non-residential and the residential. But they are integrated together, um, with, you know, pedestrian ways that connect each other, shared parking for the parking that there is. Um, and things of that nature. Where, while vertical mixed use is having like, um, retail or office or, um, similar use on the first floor and then the residential, um, pieces of that.
Can, uh, so I have a question, I appreciate this, this is, um, very thoughtfully put together. Um, and I really appreciate how we're able to achieve our goals and then make the tweaks as necessary. Because we were almost on par with what the state legislature passed and then like just a few movements. My question is with regard to the ten to fifteen percent amenity space, um, being from Westminster and a dollar in my Westminster jar. Um, and very familiar with everything that went down with Uplands as well as downtown Westminster, which are both reasonably dense, hundred-plus acre sites that include both, uh, apartment dwelling through to single-family homes. You talk about a set aside of ten to fifteen percent amenity space, but I do know the way Westminster programs. Not everything is programmed amenity space. Frequently, there's trail connectivity, there's trail integrated. Uh, and I'm just ki- I'm really curious, because amenity space, uh, could be volleyball courts, basketball courts, tennis, could be playgrounds, could be dog wash, could be dog walking, but like, those are really different than through trail connectivity. And one of the things that we have all discussed several times is like, as we're moving forward and we're getting more and more density, whether we like it or not, in places that used to be wide open. How were we encouraging open space set aside and/or trail connectivity for bike and pet? Or I guess horse, because I guess we allow horses as well.
Right, okay, um, well, there are a lot, uh, there's a, a pretty extensive menu, I think, of types of amenity space that are allowed in certain districts and not allowed in others. So like nat- natural area is one, um, of the amenity space types. And, um, that is allowed in the more suburban or rural districts. Like, um, as far as the draft goes in its current form in A one, A two, A three, um, R, you know, and RV. Uh, but, but that doesn't go all the way into being allowed and it really, in my mind, wouldn't make sense to allow that in like, um, you know, heavy commercial or to allow it even in mixed use. And on the same hand, there's like some amenity space types that are called, um, uh, uh, Greenway, which is sort of more trail oriented, um, maybe more of an internal to the development trail. Um, but that is one, or, um, plaza, or, um, there's one that's more, uh, oriented to like splash pad or playscapes. Um, those don't, those aren't permitted amenity space types in the A one and A two and A three agricultural districts, just because that's sort of out of character for what those districts are. So there are, um, amenity spaces tied to certain districts.
Right.
Um, there are some, um, in the draft, you know, density bonuses that are allowed um, when more amenity space is dedicated, as opposed to less amenity space, as an incentive for a developer to, um, to make use and to have more, uh, to go above and beyond with the amenity space. Um, I don't know if that's getting at what you're. Um, I don't know if that's getting at what you're asking.
I see chase, yeah.
Just one more piece, so Re- Reuben Flubra said, just one more piece to add, and one thing we've been talking about, and I don't have a final draft to share with you of this yet, but is a waiting, kind of a waiting system. So for example, if trail connection, if open space, if those types of things, which I agree with you very incredibly important, if those are more. More important, I mean, there's a there's a laundry list of what amenity space could include, um, we have the ability of kind of ratcheting up sort of the weighting of it. Which would then prioritize or incentivize developer to say, oh, I can accomplish this by doing this. Um, that that would lead them to that if it is at all possible, there may be situations where there, we don't want amenity space, and there may not be visit uh.
Commercial, maybe perhaps not.
There may not be, you talk about connectivity, there may not be anything to connect to in that area, so we may not look for that as much, we want to have a a list of options. Um, but I think by weighting it a little bit heavier, that if that is a possibility, and also as a general benefit, I think most developers are are very excited about connectivity. Uh, but long story short, we have the ability of weighting it higher to try to push development in that direction uh and incentivize that in that way.
I I really appreciate that, um, Southwestminster that was developed first, I think Thornton has a similar problem. Was done in a style where the single-family homes, community space was private property. And so like you had a big lot, you might have a three-quarter acre acre lot, but that, then you didn't have any parks. And I know that the local government really wrestled with how do you reinsert trails and parkland after? All the land has already been divvied up, and so as we're seeing growth come through, um, do you see any? Plan, uh, like the wait, the waiting, do you feel like the waiting of priorities is the best plan available to make sure? As these uses get filled up and actually turn from undeveloped land into developed land, and as we encourage density. That we'll be able to build something together, patch something together, so that there is community respite built in to almost all development types.
So I I, so I think it's a, it's a tool, um, I'm sure Riso's not here today, but I think it's a tool in the toolbox, as as he often likes to say, so I'll throw that one towards him. Um, but I think there's a lot of other things too, I mean, every single development application that we have, we're we're gonna consult with our parks team, and we obviously have the the post of the Parks. Space and Trails uh master plan, um, and so when we identify specific developments that are particularly uh. Uh good candidates for trail connectivity, that's something that we obviously are gonna connect, that we are going to push for. Um, and then if we have, I think, the waiting system that helps uh again, kind of incentivizes it, so I think there's more than one way to it, um, I think those are both. Opportunities for helping those connections.
Yeah, Chris. I just wanna jump in and say, I think that that opportunity is probably best in the subdivision regulations, when I hear you talking about. Plating of land and making sure there's sufficient connections between new neighborhoods and existing neighborhoods, and I think the. If I understand correctly, the recommendations today are based on Arizona District Regulations, so I think that opportunity is still coming, so it's probably good input for the team. To incorporate into that portion of the project.
Yeah, definitely, um, yeah, when when you're talking about dedication of new trails, then that is definitely a vehicle through the subdivision. Standards, but we don't, with this being a a a DSR, it's a, it's a interlinked um document. Um, and so the 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 subdivision standards are part of the document and. Um, try to make that connection there um in the the wording of of the text that that um, you know, through the plating process, then there are. Um, it's sort of where the amenity space can come into play.
So we can show the connection between compliance, for example, and bringing those concerns up through this and then out to subdivision. So you keep that string all the way through.
That that makes a lot of sense, one last follow-up question, and I really appreciate the point that we don't want to incent. Unlike an apartment complex or a single-family home or even a mixed-use development, adding a splash pad or playground is probably not a good use for a commercial. However, sometimes commercial is work center, and work centers without bike trails. Um, become really inaccessible and difficult to add bike lane, trail lane later. Um, so I'm just kind of curious, like, what thoughts we might wanna put in? Is there any thought we could put in on the front end that would allow people, for many years before I literally married into a car, my late twenties. My vehicle was a bicycle, and that's how I got to work, so when you have a job center, um, it probably is commercial, but without. Uh, yeah, I don't know if that's making sense, but like, how do we allow people to get to and from those job centers? On bike if we are not incentivizing any amenity space?
I think it's it's probably the case that trail connectivity would be one of the amenities that would be eligible and offered. Um, in all those own districts.
Okay.
So that it it's, you know, that basic and that important that that would be available. Or or, you know, an option for a developer, and then with the weightedness, we could incentivize it even more.
Okay.
Um, we could tweak that too, and that, you know, we obviously make um a lot of cross-references and connections and and. The staff were working very closely with Parks and Recreation um plan and the staff on ensuring that there's no lost opportunities when an application. Is in for a subdivision uh where there is um even, you know, a trail connectivity uh possibility.
Right. In Colorado, like.
Yes, the most of it.
Yeah, this is a little beyond me, that people do regularly bike twenty miles to work, um, that might be crazy, but they do it, and so like. How do we have that bicycle master plan integrated with all these land uses, it's kind of, I think, the shorter questions I maybe should have asked first.
I have a quick question, so is this mixed-use um category, is that something you foresee would be compatible being, say, next to a? Uh plot of land zone for that neighborhood commercial that you started out with, is that something, you know, or?
Yes, it 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 could be, I'm sorry, it could be, um, the uh, you know, there are on your future land use map, there are um areas. Um, on the future land use map, which is different from the zoning map, that that are mixed uh mixed use. As you can see, the future land use category is one of the columns there, so that would be like kind of the the uh. Obvious spot for um this district, um, you know, someone comes along and there's a, and that could act as kind of a transition from. Between um more intense commercial uh and uh residential, then it would sort of act like the neighborhood commercial. As that transitional.
Let's go, yeah.
Between, but but again, the neighborhood commercial isn't really so much trying to have a a a an integrated. Um, mixed-use development, it could have residential within it, the neighborhood commercial, um, and could have commercial, but they might be, you know, not. Not as well-integrated and connected as we would want in the mixed-use district.
Well, I guess, going back to that neighborhood commercial, are you, I mean, how integrated are you thinking of, I mean, of having? Because that allows residential and small bi- small, certain businesses, right, certain types of businesses or?
Like a kinder care or?
But I mean, so so I mean, so that could be, I mean, so how that's developed, I mean, or, you know, imagine that would be kind of up to the developers or, right, you know, like how much? How that, how much housing they would wanna have versus, is there a percentage in that, in that uh?
We've done that.
Of residential versus business?
Yeah, we we've in a in a neighborhood, uh especially in a mixed-use, but in neighborhood commercial. You could conceivably have a percentage for development, um, um, it it could can be harder to administer. And track um saying that, you know, you can have so much um presidential built out before the.
We should probably.
No much residential built out, uh, and at that point, you have to, as a percentage of the development, you have to start doing commercial to kind of make sure that there's gonna be. Commercial to or vice versa.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, back on.
Okay, so um that can be done uh in a DSR, but i- in the current draft, it's not in there.
Okay. I was just curious, kind of, but how you thought, saw those two designations, if they, you know, if.
They're similar.
If they if they could, you know, not.
They're they're similar. Would be more targeted to integrated.
Yes.
Um, trying to get the image right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And all I do is cross my legs, so.
A few more things about the mixed-use district, um, just so they're not um skipped over, um, there is a. Um, maximum lot coverage uh of eighty percent, which we find is fairly uh typical um for mixed-use districts. Um, and then some um strategies, you know, some obvious ones, like the first one there, promoting mixed-use multimodal. Pedestrian-oriented development patterns, that's sort of the the very much basics of what a mixed-use district wants to um uh do. Um, and again, it sort of ties in and can go hand in hand with the transit-oriented communities legislation, it's part of the House Bill twenty-four dash thirteen thirteen.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good bridge there, what um, what's the height, what are the height restrictions proposed for this?
Um, off the top of my head, I wouldn't know, I could, I could look and um, uh, but.
You're saying just to keep them to what we have now?
Yes, correct.
They are, I mean, is that something we'd wanna talk about, if not today, like?
John can look up very quickly, um. We just circle back to that in one moment, John.
So, um, I believe that was my last one, now hand it over to Maria for, you know, switch. Yeah.
Also, just to, just to finish up with the neighborhood commercial designation, those are the kind of small centers that you typically see at a. At an intersection adjacent to a neighborhood, and um, the the way that you can improve that in terms of. Um usability and connectivity is to ensure that there's connections to the neighborhoods from behind the center into the center. Um, which don't, you know, in traditional development, wouldn't necessarily occur, but we make sure that there's, you know, walkways or passos or whatever you wanna call them. To access the neighborhood so that people don't have to go out to the arterial just to get to the subway or the. State Farm agent or whoever occupies those units.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And before we move on, John was able to look up the height, oh excuse me.
Yeah, sixty feet.
Okay, so is that four or five stories?
Well, six. It's like twelve per story.
I said, that's pretty generous, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so now that, next of the industrial districts, what I've been working on, um, the the top-line news for the update here is that we're making minimal changes to. The permitted and conditional uses in terms of which types of industrial uses are permitted or conditional, but there's actually conditions I have to explain. Um, with respect to that, we are um working with staff on consolidating all those industrial uses that are listed. In the current DSR um to uh reflect a more up-to-date practice where. You look at, say, food manufacturing or um. Uh plastics or or manufacturing or manufacturing that doesn't involve, that involves raw materials, manufacturing that doesn't involve raw materials. Things like that, there's there's several um classification systems that exist, um, most of them are very old. Um, and I, we're gonna be discussing one while we're here, um, that has, I don't, I think, like seven. Major categories and a couple of subcategories, and is the type of thing that all those uses of, I think there's probably close to uh seventy. Um, in the code now, we could easily assign into these categories and thus reduce the size of that use table and the complexity of it. I I wanna, and I'm, we're gonna be speaking to the um, the Industrial Property Owners Consortium.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on Thursday, and uh we wanna make sure that if their use isn't shown in the ordinance, it doesn't mean it's not permitted. We have a, uh, we have a catch-all sections that we use that say every other uh industrial use in this category is permitted. Um, because the idea is that all, many of them have the exact same permitted and conditional. Um, uh, rules that apply in terms of by districts, and then they also have use standards that apply. To their specific uses, if there's something that's particularly loud or bright or noisy or truck-heavy about them. Um, so we're, everybody's covered, is what I'm saying, even if their their particular business isn't listed. Um, some of it is the decision-making about what goes, what stays and it's collapsed into a main category, what goes into a. Or just to stay, if you will, like asphalt plant, say, um, is um, you know, particular. Um, uh, use standards that apply are are pretty significant, and you would want to call out the fact that there, if you're gonna build an asphalt plant, you're gonna have. This many additional um rules that apply in addition to your basic zoning standards. Uh, so that is the the big news here, and we're gonna um get their input on those those. The idea of consolidating those uses and that'll be interesting to see, I think they'll be in favor of it. Uh, and then the other thing that we're continuing to grapple with is outdoor storage, obviously, um, one of the the um. Good ideas that is definitely, I think, we're gonna be looking at is um creating, establishing, and I'm gonna show you in a second, the districts. Establishing a, both a, we already have a minimum setback, but also a maximum setback from the primary street. On which the building is located for the purpose of having outdoor storage moved to the side and the rear of the property. Um, and we'll get in that, you know, much more intentional and the emphasis are.
As opposed to having a storage in front of the building?
Yeah, and the 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 view from the street is a a building and a landscape area, probably, um, not the materials that are on. They are stored onsite, so that's a a good solution, there's other issues that will be coming up with outdoor storage um that we have to settle on. And then, um, I I already said, this is the moderate adjustments we're making to the dimensional standards, mostly in this respect, with respect to the uh front setback. So, um, I wanna say that we we talked about um consolidating the industrial districts, we first looked at consolidating. Industrial I one and I two, um, and then staff pointed out that actually it would make more sense if we looked at. Consolidating I two and I three, well, after we did both those, look at at the analysis, see how much. How many things would have to, um, um, how many of those decisions that we would have to make in terms of, okay, now this was conditional here, it's permitted here, which way do we go? We ended up deciding to leave them as is, so there's still an I two, I one, I two, I three. Um, and one of the notes in here, increase the permitability height from sixty to seventy-five feet, that was a vestigial. Um, idea when we were thinking about collapsing I one and I two together, so you could ignore that, we're.
Okay, I'll.
Back with the idea of just a sixty-foot, we're maintaining a sixty-foot um building height limit in the I one district. Um, we are um looking at a new ninety percent lot coverage limit, which would be new for the industrial districts. Um, again, the standards for screening outdoor storage, the amenity space requirement um in industrial uses. This isn't, it it doesn't, um, we're wait, we're, right now, the idea is to waive the amenity space requirement for industrial uses. That doesn't mean that they'll be excused from the landscaping and screening, uh, you know, some of the amenities essentially are landscaping and screening. But they will still have to comply with that, but they're not gonna have to do, go the extra mile with other amenities, that doesn't, we we could, we. Could put that on the table, if any of the industrial uses you think are of a type, particularly that in the I one, that would be um job. Centers and would maybe um should have a trail connectivity, you would wanna pass up the opportunity to connect to a trail. To an I one use if there were, if it existed, so, um, based on our conversations a few minutes ago, I think we should think about that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and uh.
Oh, is there a question? What's the current lot coverage for an I one?
Ninety is new.
Oh.
It's, it's not listed.
In the current regs, uh, we didn't find it, I don't know if there's a, you know, a a internal practice for what it would be, but. Didn't see it and kind of just reviewing the black and white wording of the DSR.
So what what's the purpose of the ninety percent coverage then, is that to to keep it from being a hundred percent or? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so that there's at least a buffer of some small por- portion around. That's around the whole. Or where's that ten percent?
It doesn't, it it would depend on, it would depend on the site layout, um, generally, there'd be, you know, the screen and and outdoor storage screening would be wherever that. The the material is and then sure, a lot of la- more landscaping in front too. Um, it's, I think, generally with the buffers and screen, they're out, they're going to exceed ten percent of.
Yeah, and 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 lot coverage is building and paving, there, so there's building coverage and and lot coverage where building is just the buildings. There, so there's building coverage and, and lot coverage where building is just the buildings, a percentage that they, and we don't have both. That, and that, that can get confusing maybe, but we're, we're just, um, lot coverage being paved area and building area.
So. Okay, so new is ninety percent lot coverage limit, so is. I, I'm trying to think of CD standard, so would it? Accessibility by, let's say, a fire truck, so is that ten percent include like driveway? I mean. So there's ten percent of the land available is how I read that, if ninety percent is lot coverage.
It, it, so the ninety percent could also include paint, so the building, the building footprint could be much smaller than up to that ninety percent, so.
It's both combined?
It's both combined, so it's not, it's not saying that drive aisles and parking and things like that all have to fit within that ten percent. The, the parking, any paved area would be part of that up to ninety percent.
Up to ninety percent?
To, in, like, if you think in terms of impervious surfaces, solid surfaces.
Okay, what is the height standard then? Is it the same?
Yeah, we're gonna keep them the same. There, there, there is a note in here that indicates that it would be going up in I one and we're no longer gonna do that. It would be sixty feet in I one and seventy-five and I two and I three. That's, that's what you have now.
That's how it is now?
Yeah.
Like a lot, okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Um, and then, um, the last issue is, um, caretaker's quarters. That is a, uh, new, um, except for you, essentially that would be allowed, um, by a conditional use permit or. An administrative action or administrative decision, um, and that would be available in all three. Um, industrial districts, so there could be, uh, one dwelling unit where somebody who works for the operation would stay overnight. Um, okay, so again, just to, in terms of the rationales, the maximum front setback means outdoor storage goes to the side rear. We don't need amenity space so much in industrial uses with little public traffic, but we can rethink that in terms of connectivity and. And maybe some other, um, amenity types that where we should be requiring it, particularly in the I one, I would say. Um, and then the rationale for the caretakers is the, um, overnight security. So this is the I two, uh, pretty much the same. Um, again, the ninety percent lot coverage limit, um, we wouldn't, we were gonna look at amenity space requirements. My, and my inkling is that we wouldn't be requiring additional amenity spaces. Here in the, um, I two or I three, but we can put it on the table for discussion. And, um, this, whatever new rules we end up resolving or resulting with for the outdoor storage, obviously would apply. Um, also, um, also in I two. And the lot coverage limit, um, the ten percent set aside that isn't impervious surface or solid surfaces. Um, the landscaping and screening is part of that, so it's really, they're, they're meeting their, that ten percent requirement. Um, um, just in the act of, I believe, the landscaping requirement.
Can I ask, what are some examples of I, this, uh, businesses that would be that are in I two zoning?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm asking for examples of what ty- what types of businesses fall under I two, just so I have a picture in my navigating to the used.
Just while they're navigating specifically, this is, I'm more of a general statement. I would say I want, I know you asked about I two, I one is generally, uh. Light industrial uses that are typically inside of a building. I two and I three start getting toward things that are more even inside and outside.
Okay. Well, that, that's a good general, yeah, that makes sense.
There's also, I, I will say too, there's a lot of, well, there are a lot more details. There's several uses that maybe say conditional and I one and then permitted in I two or I three, so that's, that's one of the other, uh. By patient, I two, I three.
Okay, thank you.
Or I one, I two.
That's, that's, that's the most common way that they're treated is they're conditional in I two and permitted in I three, that's my sense, um. But some of them are actually pretty intense industrial uses that could be in I.
So you can have like bus repair in I one.
Can you do pickle, can you do the pickle manufacturing in I two?
I, I think the pickle manufacturing was a lot in I two. Yeah, pickle manufacturing is a conditional use in I two and it's permitted in I three.
Where zoning consultants get their laughs, pickle manufacturing, pill manufacturing. And then just something in general like caustic materials. Um, okay, so, yeah, and then, um, just to finish up with the industrial districts, again, um, keeping almost everything the same, uh, we're. Uh, that, what this doesn't get to, which, which will be, um, important for you to see, is, um. Some of these uses have, like we've said, these use standards that apply specific to them.
Yeah.
And that's just the additional layer of requirements on top, you're, you have a baseline permission to create this use in each of these districts. But you're also required to do this, this, and this, um, because of the nature of your use, so that, that's a big. Um, part of regulating industrial uses is, uh, to try to tailor the standards specifically. Um, if there's something of concern to the neighbors or, um, due to the nature of the operation that you need to control better. That's it.
So as you mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, there were, well, again, all of that feedback was very helpful. We appreciate it. There were two specific areas that we just want to be very clear and get clear direction from the board, uh, today on. Uh, so those are on the screen here, so the first would be the, just the general idea of combining the commercial, uh, zone districts, so C zero and C one. You'd be able to commercial, C two, C three would become general commercial, C four, C five become, become, uh, heavy commercial. And if there's any other questions on that.
But these are adopted later as part of the launch.
Yes, nothing is adopted until the very end, we're, we're, so, so again, then this is an iterative process, you'll have another chance to, to take a look at this. We have future presentations, uh, to kind of always circle back. Uh, and again, the overall idea is not to really get rid of anything, it's really just combining a lot of these already C zero and C one.
Yeah.
Probably ninety plus percent of the time already match, and so it's, it's, it's in some ways largely a housekeeping item. Uh, to get, to, to streamline it and combine a lot of this already similar uses.
I don't have any questions.
No, I mean, I think that makes sense in terms of, and then in addition to this, then it's collapsing this very long list of. Or table of uses into fewer categories, I mean, it, you know, of consolidating the commercial zones, right?
That's correct.
Okay, um, I guess the, my question about outdoor storage is we're only talking about going forward. Are we talking about any retroactive? Screaming or for current, for existing businesses?
So the expectation is there will be a significant number of people locking up uses that are, that are already in existence today and are, are able to. Continue to operate, uh, certainly there are uses that say don't have a, you know, there's outdoor storage on, uh, a property that doesn't even have a building anymore. I think the same going forward, uh, new, uh, new developments, uh, would have to have a building in order to shield the outdoor storage from that. So there will be a lot of, like I said, legal not conform use that can and can be allowed to continue, uh, these, these would be for, for new project.
Yeah, then I, I don't have any other questions on the recommendations right now. I think they make sense.
Thank you, come on. No, I don't. I really appreciate this and compliments for saying legal not conforming uses.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think.
Yeah.
There are, you know, one, kind of look at this. Uh, so this is actually the same slide as you previously saw in the very beginning. The only difference is it's, you are here in number five, commercial and industrial districts. Our next step will be module three, which is the environmental and sustainability standards. Um, what is not on the screen is sort of the interim step, I would say, which is the agricultural, uh, zone districts, which is technically part of module two, but just like. Given the amount that we covered today, we thought it made sense to kind of pull that out, so we will be back, uh, I don't have it scheduled yet, but I would expect in the next. Month or two, so timeframe, uh, to present to the entire board on the stack agricultural zone districts, and then again, we'll be back again, uh, in the, uh, uh. Closer to the October timeframe for the module three, and again, this will all be iterative ends of other things change, kind of come back to this as well. More members, um, that is, that is the end of our presentation for today. I, I'm looking to Dionne maybe a little bit, I know we had some questions, um, from National RCO. That we didn't necessarily talk about today. Would you like me to, to read those in and see if they stir comments?
I do have one more question. You're meeting with IPAC on Thursday, so how, when will we hear about that? Uh, when will we get, uh, on that conversation?
Sure, so maybe actually just, I'll take one step back, um, personally, while, while, uh, Brian and Maria are in town, uh, we had several things that are going on. So we were doing a community engagement meeting on Wednesday, which is the general community. And then Thursday morning, we'll be meeting with IPAC, and then Thursday evening, we'll be doing a similar presentation to this, to planning commission, to solicit input. And that's actually still also a public meeting, so there could be public, uh, public, uh, viewers as well to that. Um, we would be happy to provide kind of a summary of, of, of what, how those meetings are, if you have to write that to BLT. Pass that along, uh, to the board to kind of give a, a quick debrief of what's, of the, the findings, the conversation, the outcomes that were suggested.
Thank you. We do have Commissioner Otterey Seals questions. I think that we can take those as input as we're working forward on the next couple of modules. And I think the team is aware of some of the, uh, things he wanted to highlight, unless there's anything in those questions that you all wanted us to address directly, but we've got, we've captured it.
Please want to, like, follow up on that.
Thank you.
I'm. I'm. I'm.
So, man, the mush bag is clutch. Doesn't say. All right, all right. Forget, all right. All right, well, th- thank you. We are ready to start the next study session, so we are presenting today. Um, the first budget amendment, proposed budget amendment for the twenty twenty-five adopted budget. Um, and it's going to include items to be carried for, forward from twenty twenty-four. We'll talk today about the overall carry forward process and how the amendment is developed. How we're managing and tracking projects that are included to be carried forward or not recommended to be carried forward. Um, and then we have, uh, some questions. I know that, uh, some commissioners were interested in on particular projects, and we'll answer any questions you might have about. Some of the projects that are on either one of these lists to be carried forward. So I am going to, um, introduce really quickly, we, we have with us from the budget and finance team, Mark Futh, who is our CIP administrator. And we have Pernell, uh. Olsen, Pernell Olsen, uh, who's one of our senior budget, um, managers in the budget and finance team, uh, and both of them have. Done a fantastic job of helping to get ready, this, uh, large list of projects and managing this, um, throughout the year, not just for this amendment, but throughout the year. Managing all of our, our projects that are ongoing right now in the county, so they are both gonna be helping with the presentation today.
Uh, so first off, what is a carry forward? Uh, this is a transfer of unspent funds from last year into this year. Um, these are previously approved projects, um, that were not completed by the end of last year. We're not adding any new projects, only the projects that have already been within the budget. Uh, they were in last year's budget, some of them were carried over from prior years, and they're still being carried over because they're multi-year projects. Uh, as, as far as the process goes, we are statutorily required to do a budget amendment to bring the funds from last year into this year. Um, a legal notice will be published prior to adopting this in public hearing, and when you. And when you combine the adopted budget for twenty twenty five with the carry forward, that's where we get the twenty twenty five. Look at a lot of different criteria and what you see on your screen are are kind of the the drivers behind those, but we're looking for. Is the project already under contract? Do we have someone hired to do the work? Uh, is there financial progress? Uh, sometimes we're looking at, and sometimes there's not financial progress, but there might be actual work being done where money has gone out the door yet. Um, active spending, of course, and then we look at how much was spent. And we typically will wait for accounting to close the year before we'll come up with that dollar amount because there will be lagging invoices that come in in twenty twenty five that will be accrued back to twenty twenty four. Um, and then we'll reach out to the department that's managing the project, uh, to just kind of get the description why it wasn't the project finished, was planned to not finish, um, and just get that kind of description. And before we move anything forward, we make sure there's, uh, enough fund balance within the fund to support the project in addition to, uh, the adopted budget. And lastly, we're looking at is, is it feasible for a project in the scope that it was originally adopted at to continue to move forward in a new budget year, things change over time?
You do want to reiterate that during this process, we look at every single project on the list, there's uh, more than a hundred projects this year, but we do go line by line and look at every single project and ask project managers from every department to provide some of the information that Mark mentioned, so it does take a couple of months to review all of the projects and get the current status, but none of them get off free, they all have to participate in this and make sure that we are carrying forward those projects that we actually believe, um, are necessary and can be, uh, supported to.
Does that also include, um, CIP projects? It does include it. I don't know, because you do those in five year increments or the I don't know, I don't know, I'm trying to like priorities, but you do over a five year span, um. I haven't seen the completion of some of those and they're old, so what do we do in those instances where because our purchasing power is not what it is today, even eight months ago was much different than it is today, just because of the uncertainty and the threat of tariffs and other, um, challenges and materials, so what do we do and how often do we follow up with those CIP projects?
The the capital projects are reevaluated every year through the CIP process, um, so if it's a multi-year project, the original request is sent back to the department, um, for them to for it to be basically resubmitted in the subsequent years. Um, and they'll evaluate if the funding that was originally requested is sufficient, and if it changes, then we highlight that and it goes to the committee, so if fifteen million dollar project becomes a seventeen million dollar project, that's evaluated by the committee. And it's re-scored with the slate of existing projects and anything new that's being added within the budget year. Um, and then when we adopt the CIP, the only amounts that go in the budget are the current budget year. The subsequent four years are projected amounts and they are not adopted into the budget.
Interesting, okay.
So on this slide here, it's, uh, this is a summary of what we're looking at carrying forward for each of the funds. Uh, this, the total here includes about a hundred and thirty projects in the different funds. Um, we'll kind of tend to focus here on the general fund, uh, we'll go into the detail for all of these numbers here, uh, but just kind of want to give you a kind of a just a a feel for how how much money we're talking about. Uh, and as they talked about, these are projects again that have already been approved, they were already in the budget. Um, so they've already been budgeted in twenty four and we're looking to carry them over to twenty twenty five and then they're not, there's nothing new in these projects. Um, so you look, total expenditures, total one hundred eighty six million, seven hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty two dollars. And then there is a small amount of revenue that are offsetting these, usually they're grants, uh, we'll see those, uh, we'll see that in the detail as well. So our net use of fund balance is one hundred and fifty three million, nine hundred and fifty two thousand, three hundred and sixty four dollars. Um, of that, you'll see up there in the general fund, it's about twenty eight and a half million dollars of use of fund balance in the general fund.
I do want to highlight in the capital facilities fund, um, we had CLPs issued, um, which had a significant impact on this this year and is included in a lot of the carry forward, so, uh, you'll see that we have some influx of funds that are also contributing to what you're carrying forward.
Okay, on this slide here, uh, these are the not recommended projects, uh, so we're not looking to carry these amounts over, but we want to show you kind of what we put off, uh, from carrying over from twenty four into twenty twenty five. Uh, in the general fund, there's six point seven million dollars of projects and then in the capital facilities, these, uh, there are about two point nine million dollars covering about twenty three projects. These, uh, were not recommended through discussions with the ELT and then also with the directors of the departments, um, and the reasons for not moving them forward would range anything from change in priorities to funding, um, and resources. Here we just have kind of a a graph showing what's, what our carryovers look like, a couple of you have seen carryovers before, uh, Commissioner Hanson has not seen this before, so we kind of get a little bit of a scope here of what kind of dollar amounts we're talking about year over year. Um, in this, there's a little, the little caveat that Dion mentioned of ARPA. Uh, we have those dollars in there and you'll see that they're kind of in the gray, uh, so if you kind of focus on the green, which are are kind of our true expenses, you know, our true projects that we're carrying over year to year, um, there's not, you know, there's not a large fluctuation in that. Um, the little bump in twenty twenty four, uh, but you'll see in twenty twenty five, it's pretty you know, it's pretty average amount compared to our last three years. And then finally, um, we just want to talk about, uh, well, my little piece here, um, available fund balance, always a big topic, uh, of concern. I want to just kind of walk through where we ended twenty twenty four, we had an available fund balance of two hundred and ten million dollars in the general fund. As we walk down this, the twenty twenty five budgeted gain, so we, in twenty twenty five, we were budgeting that our fund balance was going to grow by twelve point two four six million dollars, so that was, um, a gain for the budget. And then with this amendment, if it's approved, it would reduce our fund balance by twenty eight and a half million dollars, and again, on the general fund here. Leaving us a fund balance at the end of the year budgeted to be one hundred ninety three million, seven hundred forty eight thousand dollars. Of that, one hundred ninety three, we always have to take out our strategic reserves, our tavers and different restrictions, um, and that equals seventy nine million dollars. That leaves us a total unrestricted fund balance of one hundred and fourteen million, six hundred and eighty five thousand dollars.
I do want to point out there, you may recall in the budget kickoff presentation we had a few weeks ago. Uh, we shared information about that unrestricted fund by balance and we do have some conversations coming up around some of the projects that are already committed with that, plus the possibility of funding other projects like some of the improvements at the detention center that we're trying to prioritize and things like that, that would likely, um, come out of that unrestricted fund balance, so that is something that we'll be talking about more this summer as we go through the budget process and look at our options for you know, what we have available, that are resources to manage some of those priorities.
And there has been a couple, I think there's been some questions in the past about, uh, I think you've seen maybe some differing numbers as far as estimates on the ending fund balance. This one, before we didn't have our accounting closed, so we didn't know what that two hundred and ten million dollars ending balance for twenty twenty four was. We were using like an estimate, uh, our budgeted number, so now that we have our final number from accounting, this is pretty much where we're at, I mean, the two hundred and ten is not going to change, this is, that's our starting point for twenty twenty five.
Do all of these lines make sense?
Yes, thank you.
More sense than when I looked at it by myself.
And that's why they're here.
I'll be honest, so thank you.
Go to the next slide, I I did want to, um, go back and talk about, um, a couple slides back, we discussed you know, how much we are carrying in our our fund balance and carry forward as well as some of the trends that we're seeing. One thing we do want to point out is that last year we did, um, start working on, how can we complete the big backlog of projects that we are working on, we we have a number of projects being carried forward from twenty twenty four. As Mark mentioned, some of them from twenty twenty three and earlier, um, and we're really prioritizing getting through those projects that we already have on deck. And looking at with the CIP process, not starting so many new projects until the fully balanced completing the projects that have started. So that's another factor sort of how we're approaching the carry forward, um, and what we've recommended moving forward that we can, we can get that done.
So, where are you going to take? So budget carry forwards are, it's a common thing to do, um, and we we just wanted to highlight, uh, some of the reasons why they occur, so longer term projects, uh, roads, buildings. They take a long time and we try our best in the capital improvement, uh, process to cash flow them and and put them up the funds in the year, they're going to be spent, but reality railroads, uh, you know, building permits, things like that always come into play and so oftentimes we'll have to do a carryover to keep a project moving and keep the budget from prior years with subsequent appropriations. Um, also you'll see special orders for for special equipment, uh, one that you'll see on this list is Bearcat for the sheriff's office. You know, it takes fourteen months to build something like that and they don't want to build it for you unless they can see it in your budget.
Does it come from Canada?
I don't think that one does, but I don't know.
Just that snowplow.
And and this runway proof. Um, and then of course, there's other delays and challenges and so that's why we're always reaching out and asking for justification, just the story behind, why is this project from last year to this year?
And I could talk about this one, um, you know, one of the things that's been an ongoing conversation as we've been working through all of the carry for items is to really make sure that we have good practices in place to manage all of our projects, that we aren't sitting on funds, that we aren't spending too slowly. And we aren't taking on more than we have the capacity to actually get done and it's always a balancing act every year, but just so you know, some of the things that we're working on going into next year with just overall management of our project portfolio, um, i- is first and foremost formalizing our carryover process more and creating more formal policy around carry forward. We want our project managers to have really clear guidance and expectations around project management and completion and progress, you know, what we're expecting, um, to make sure that we really are getting the most out of the projects that we've committed and are taking advantage of our funding now versus caring for projects, and to your point, for multiple years that, you know, maybe aren't making progress and we're losing out on some of the opportunity when it comes to what we're what we're completing. Um, we're also working towards increasing awareness within all of our departments of those policies and procedures, what the expectations are, um, so with the proposing projects, they are fully informed and ready to manage the project and understand what realistically it'll take to complete the project. Um, and then facilitating more consistent project status with all of the project managers and departments. Really asking some of those key questions throughout the year, um, to to make sure that projects are progressing that they have what they need, if they're running into roadblocks or if the project's changing significantly. That we're having those conversations so that we can get those projects over the finish line and manage any issues. And if a project's no longer feasible, it doesn't make sense that we all can have a conversation about that and redirect those resources elsewhere, if the project's not going to not going to be completed, so there's a lot of work coming, um, in the next year, carry forward process, managing projects that we'll be sharing with you um, throughout the year as we get closer to it.
Any questions about the carryover process in general?
Nope, nope, thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
We'll now move into the nuts and bolts of this whole thing.
Switch screens here.
Yeah, if we want to go, this is just a summary, this is basically the same information that was on the one slide you'll see at the bottom. Uh, the summary by fund there at the bottom kind of just shows the expense what I had in the one slide. Uh, if we go to the next one, it'll start showing, these are the specific projects. Uh, by, first you'll see over there on the left, it's, you know, by their department and the project name and then where they uh, what they had available in twenty twenty four, what they spent in twenty twenty four, how much is left at the end of twenty four. And then if there's a, some projects have an additional request, like they do, they had some cost overruns. They added scope to the project or something like that, you'll see that amount there and then, uh, the next columns there just kind of talk about, okay, we're, hey, we're gonna, we want to ask for this amount, if there's any offsetting revenue and then what's our net use of fund balance, uh, and then there's a description for the project and its status. If you guys have any the the dollar amounts here range from nine thousand dollars to up. We, in the past, we've kind of looked at just a certain threshold, but if you guys wanted to start, um, it's a seventeen page document uh, of projects, uh, like I said, there's over a hundred and thirty projects in here and we're glad to go through the detail on every one of them if you want. Or if you want to sit there and and kind of, as we just talk in general, the bumgarter, and if there's no questions, we can move on. Um, however you guys want to proceed.
Sorry for my scrunchy face as I try to read this text.
I know.
There's a lot of, and we we try to get, we feel it's all relevant information and it's just so hard to get this much information spread out. Uh, or, you know, kind of condensed in a way that you can both see it and have full picture. Um, so I do apologize, this, this is the one that is larger than any other one, any other one.
So this is a long list and I know that you all may not have, um, digested the the whole list and what's on it. The team has spent, you know, quite a lot of time vetting the list and going through, but there are a couple of projects that I know Commissioner Odereseo had some questions about and that we, uh, probably just want to share sort of where we are with those projects and we can talk about those and then if you have other specific projects that you've been tracking or want to to, um, we can answer those, um, but we feel pretty confident that we have worked through the process of you know, getting this list, the most feasible projects that we really feel are are critical, are matching our priorities and still meeting the intent of what the project was originally approved to do, um, so we definitely can go line by line, but I think that, um, will be a big effort. Um, so it's alright with you, I think we can start with a couple of the questions that we've already received about projects and share updates on those. Uh, and, uh, and go from there.
So, yeah, if you want to, the first one that Commissioner Odereseo had a question on was the mechanical room glass wall replacement. And it is on there, it would be in page, one, two, page five. About two thirds of the way down, I believe. Maybe it's not the same as my print.
Fourth on the bottom.
Yeah, fourth one from the bottom.
Okay, got it. Would you like Amir to speak to that? Amir, could you come address the replacement of the glass wall and the mechanical room and human services?
Sorry, I'm squishing too much.
The human services, glass wall replacement and the mechanical room. The question that Commissioner Odereseo asked is, uh, what wall needs to be replaced, was there an issue in design or construction? And can the county recover some of these costs? So Amir has answers.
He has some answers and we're still researching the details because the design was taken several years ago. Apparently this was a, uh, a room that was designed for like a wall. It's now being used as a mechanical, now it's not used as a mechanical room, the glass that you have on the actual wall there, it actually has a lot of sweating. Uh, a lot of chipping of of glass, so we're we're not allowing anyone to go into that space, we're looking for a solution. Uh, we had some design money to carry that forward so that we find a better solution. We've hired an engineer to come look at some details, but Commissioner Odereseo specifically asked about the design, is there anything we can do as far as, uh, recouping our clock, I don't believe we can, because I, I think at some point, this is what I'm researching. Internally, we may have changed, but the design was that's what I can come up with just now to really take the project files.
Okay, that is not the update I expected, I thought you were going to say somebody was playing baseball indoors and they shouldn't have been and we need to get a new class window.
Wish it were that, I wish it were that easy. I don't, I don't want to misstate, but certainly when you look at the picture of where that, so there's a south northeast corner of the building, when you look, you clearly know that the original design could not have been this, so we've done a little bit more research and we'll be careful what we respond back to.
Amir, was that already a mechanical room when we purchased the building though?
Oh, maybe.
It may have been.
Yeah.
It may have been, but I think we had some other views in mind for it.
Okay.
So I don't know that this is a design flaw, I think it was designed.
The design would have been about ten years ago, so there's not really cost recovery or something of that nature.
Yeah, so that part I can answer, no cost recovery.
No.
Uh next question uh was around the zero scape and someone read underneath there, uh two hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. This question was, uh where is this taking place? Um and it was there, uh what is the expected construction cost after design? Amir, you might want to just stay out.
See, Amir, bring a chair. Sit by a microphone.
Is this about the zero scape? So first of all, that's a countywide effort. We're looking at, how can we look at all of us, all of our facilities to try to minimize sort of. A lot of water, which is not sustainable. So we hired a design team to actually look at all of facilities. And I think we're going to spend. Then we've only spent about five hundred and thirty thousand of that, but the goal would be to come up with a design that we can use across. Entire county, all the buildings that we manage, and how to reduce our water use. So it's it's certainly a sustainability effort, but it is something that we. Hired a firm to actually help us on, because every building is different. Thank you.
That's a, this is a design for, you said, for the whole, for all the, all of our buildings.
Yeah, no construction has has been just designed on at this building, like the J C is probably one of our. What I call water hogs. There's a lot of grass, there are a lot of trees. So we're looking at how do we reduce the water uses? And then look at G C, then look at all the other buildings, because they're all different.
Do you have any estimate on like, if one of his five questions was the expected construction after that?
Take a look at the entire portfolio first.
Uh next question was establishing the sustainability fund is a one million dollar. Uh project had a little expense in twenty uh four, but with an additional request of two fifty, it came right back up to. And ninety five thousand dollars. Uh. The Commissioner Odoricio's question was, how is this fund prioritized and allocated compared to C I P? And are there different processes, thresholds, approvals? For this?
That's a great question. I'm happy to answer that one. The sustainability fund was, eh when we asked for it, I think twenty three, twenty four budget year. Was to look at sustainability slightly separate than what we see out of C I P, to look at sustainable projects. For example. I think we spent about six hundred thousand dollars for L E D lighting upgrades at the J C. So it was targeted towards those types of projects that would not necessarily go through P I C I P. The operation on nature, but sustainability helped us meet our twenty thirty plan as we started looking at um. Reduction energy use, reduction water use, those types of efforts, what we were using.
I really appreciate. Uh there's a fund for that. I know that that's been a priority of the board and we're already on like Plan two point O. Um and continuing those efforts. So I I do really appreciate that.
Board actually recognized and actually set in the front and aside.
And we actually have a study session planned for June twenty fourth to talk to you further about a set of projects to help advance the goals and the sustainability plan. So there's. A discussion coming soon.
Okay.
Uh the next one is on page eight and this was at the top of. Uh it's the uh Riverdale Animal Shelter, the Reflection Garden Gazebo. Top up there. Uh Commissioner's question was uh basically around what is this and when did the B O C C approve this? Um I can say. I don't know if this, I'd have to look at another file to see where it was. I don't know if you have that.
I do have it. Okay, perfect. Uh this was approved in the twenty twenty three budget. Uh Reflection Garden is intended to use in a separate to separate patrons from the general public. But receiving their pets uh in the life service. It's that's why they call it Reflection Garden. Is in need of a shade structure to provide the public more calming and soothing for grieving patrons. The pathway to the garden is a separate route from the main entrance, and there are limited paintings, trees, plantings of trees and shrubs. And seating is provided with uh select folders. So just a cover for that reflective garden is already there. That was approved in twenty twenty three.
Okay.
A couple more down there uh was the crawl space mold mitigation. Uh that's the larger one for two point one million dollars. And the question around this one was, how did we underestimate this project? Because it does have an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in requested dollars. To be added to it in twenty twenty five. And uh once mitigated, will the new crawl space prevent future problems from rearing up?
Well, we hope so. I think we found what we found when we started uh going underneath and actually doing mitigation. And the further you go, because we have uh wet conditions, the groundwater, we have uh the faulted ditch. So as we dry out and start mitigating and ventilating underneath, we think that the ultimate solution is grading uh with the grade. Also help uh dry up what's there, what's is graded and potentially line the ditch. Those are uh things that we're looking at. But you know what you know when you find out. And we we had to back out, make sure it was safe for our teams to get underneath there, to actually find out. What was in there, was it safe to crawl underneath the space? So when we found out, we started going further. We set up mitigation efforts, we set up shoring, we set up all kinds of. Uh tieback suits to get access to this area. So your costs go up. But we didn't know exactly. There was no way you can know how much mold, how much mitigation will cost till you go into the spaces.
Those were the, there's more questions uh from Commissioner Odoricio. Those are the last ones that have to do with the general fund. So I want to kind of go back and say. You know, as the commissioners look through that, do you guys have any other questions about any other projects that are uh proposed for rollover?
I do not have any other questions. So this is seventeen pages long. I mean, I think it's part of the public background. And every commissioner needs to review it to. Their level of comfort before we vote on it. Uh this is gonna come before I say just made a public hearing at some point. In the schedule.
June twenty fourth.
On June twenty fourth?
Yes, and I I I would point out um there, however much you, you know, want to review it, take your time with it, where you would like to have it on the public hearing agenda on the twenty fourth.
Yeah.
If you have questions about specific projects as you're looking through it, we definitely are happy to, you know, look into it and find information if you have, you know, a particular project that you want. More clarification on ahead of uh the public hearing so that we can get you all the information you need. Uh let us know because we we have all of that and can share that before you vote over it.
I really appreciate that. Um. I can understand the line of questioning of. And it did, you know, these these budgets are many, many, many line items. And the board was really in a uh. Position that board members, some board members no longer with us, that they didn't want to look at the detail of it. So. It's probably a shock to see some of the titles and what does that do? Um the line of questioning is probably also leaning a little bit towards. I love the idea of Reflection Garden. Um Commissioner Odoricio is not here to defend himself, but is that. Critical to the operation? Because we want to be cognizant of. Funding, what does service delivery look like? This certainly is an impact too, and it's also aligns with the vision of. Those at the animal shelter that access that service. Um it was very intentionally designed that the services are separate. So not everyone. If you're, you know, it's bereavement or whatever, you're not, the patrons are not sharing the same space. And I think that that's important. So I mean, I think the good commissioner needs to probably schedule some time with his questions with staff. Is it alright if we talk about the ones that are on the not recommended list? Um because there are some projects that are not recommended to. Carry forward and make sure that you all are.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. That's fine. You'll probably need to name some things that will be like, hey, what happened to that? And so this will give you a chance to tell us what happened to that.
Otherwise, you can just ask that occasionally over the next several years when you remember them.
This this is said, this is said by a guy who's leaving. He's not gonna have to answer those questions.
That's the suggestion.
There are a lot of projects. We know that you will get questions, we get questions from departments and from our located offices about various projects and. When they fell off the list or what happened. And so uh we're happy to dig into that more. And then three questions you might have as we're communicating.
You've got to get it up.
I apologize for the size of the of the.
So, yeah, the these are the projects that are not recommended. Uh same setup here as. The first one you'll see here is the Veterans Memorial Amphitheater. Uh this is not recommended to move forward. Mainly because we do have two million dollars in the twenty twenty five budget that was already approved. So we don't uh are. The process here was to, let's spend our two million that's already budgeted in twenty twenty five without rolling and. Taking additional dollars in there that we may not even spend. Um as that project's reevaluated and everything, we can kind of. At the point where more dollars are needed, we can bring it forth in an amendment. Uh next ones are uh related to our I T department. Uh just through some reprioritization and some uh strategic. Uh initiatives, these projects have fallen off uh for the time being. Uh they may be readdressed at a at a certain point when resources and the need. Uh comes back up. Uh but for right now, we're putting these on hold. Yeah, so there's a, there's a a long list of facilities. Well, I won't say a long list, but you'll, the next grouping is from facilities and. Uh a lot of these had to do with uh either reprioritization or just human capacity and. Comparing them to the other list of projects and kind of being realistic about what we want to try and get done within a year's time. Um and so you can kind of read that as you go down the list of these projects. That, you you know. We're gonna focus on uh higher critical projects like rooftop units that are failing. And we have some. Funds within the budget to respond, like uh one of the questions Commissioner Odoricio had was around concrete repair and replacement at the Justice Center. There are funds in facilities budget to address like urgent needs. Um and then that larger project can come back at a later time when there's more capacity to address. Have a general fund total, you'll see this as the the previous kind of overview slide has, we've got six point seven million dollars. Uh that are basically, we would not recommend to move over in the general fund. And if we move into the capital facilities fund. Yeah, so within here, there are um there are two projects that uh have budget within the current year. And so the same. Same thing, we want to use the twenty twenty five adopted budget funds before adding to them. Uh based on the activity for these projects last year being uh low.
I did. It flashed across the screen quickly and I apologize. I didn't get a chance to see the header. So if we're about to get to it, I understand. I saw a corner generator replacement. Uh is that the next page? It's right there. Yeah, okay. I can't tell if you move forward or back. Um and I see this is on the not recommended. List. And I just, maybe just like a verbal commentary, yes, the generator has been evaluated. We're not gonna run into. Uh to the best of our knowledge, an emergency situation where their generator shuts off during a critical moment.
Yeah, so that generator um is currently in good working condition and has several years of useful life remaining.
Still available, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and the request was driven by a desire from the coroner for the for a one hundred percent. Generator backup for the building, where this one was designed just for like the life safety and critical needs of the building. When there's power.
Unfortunately, I think we're in a critical needs funding mindset for the next few years. So that makes sense.
So shorter list, easier to go through. Uh two funds involved there. Uh. If we can't, you know, I don't know if you guys, you know, would like to just go through kind of in general, what. We can talk about total amounts for the other funds or if there's, if you guys want to look at these offline. Um and then get back with any questions, we can certainly address those.
Can I ask a follow up question also about the coroner's office? Uh on the page that you just navigated away from, I see identified a community incident command center. And I'm just kind of curious how this is the same different than O E M? Like, do we need this facility? Or when we've had to use a community incident command center, do we just repurpose a conference room? Like, what are we doing? What's the protocol here? I, because I see the little little notes that there's already a lot of activity at the corner and probation facility. And I agree with that. They've had tremendous amount of. Uh remediation and updates the past few years. But um do we have a sufficient plan for a community incident command center already?
So that was the thing, when we were going through and evaluating uh these projects, uh you'll. Our thoughts were along those lines. We already have an E O C uh with emergency management uh to handle things like that. And so.
And they have sufficient space for the current community needs?
They do. And generally, if we have incident command, which is different.
Yes.
It's more on site. Um then we have facilities identified for that too, and we're currently. Updating the agreements on those all around the community. This is not a space that you would stand up in incident command unless it was absolutely only targeted to. Corner operations. And if that's the case, it would be a response to the coroner's office and incident command would be separate.
Got it. Okay, that that explanation makes sense to me. That over the tours of the thousands of miles, we might need incident command at a variety of places such as. The tornadoes on the eastern plains or a significant crash in I twenty five or et cetera.
And that's a good point, because here shortly, we'll have that after action report for you all. It's currently a draft. I have the tornadoes and we'll have an update on. So what's next in addressing E O C's and O E M?
Great. That works for me. Thank you. So this is staying on. No, this is not being funded, not being funded. Okay.
I do want to point out, just at the end of the general fund, um there are, there are uh three entries down kind of at the bottom of. Uh the general fund section. Uh I just want to point out the nineteen million, nineteen point five million dollars for ARPA dollars. Uh you'll see that's it. There's both a expenditure amount and a revenue amount, so there's no net effect to the general fund. Uh underneath there's a seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar transfer to the fleet fund. That's when a vehicle that, again, is a rollover in the fleet fund. But we still have to do the transfer from the, we have to reallocate the budget transfer from the general fund to the fleet fund to cover those vehicles. Um and you'll see the different vehicles, like uh Mark mentioned, like the Bearcat uh is is included in that. And then at the very bottom, there's the four point eight million dollar transfer for CASP. And that's to cover all of their projects and uh the two, you know, like the plow and the boulder that are coming uh for that fund. And we have to transfer since they do not support their own operation, they can't support their capital expenditures in their business cases. So we do it every. Every time they have a project and in a budget year, we'll transfer uh their C I P and their business cases uh from the general fund to CASP to cover those expenses.
Does this include the grant funding that comes in from F D A, et cetera, then?
Not normally, because that's not known at the time. And so we fully, we fully load it upfront because. Uh CASP doesn't know exactly what their grants might be.
Cause they're awarded in the year of the operation. So then, at the end of the year, the operation part is set that back out. Wonder if that makes sense to everyone.
Yeah, so, yeah, uh what Alicia is referring to, so CASP, a lot of their C I P projects are uh. Grant funded, like on a ninety ten split. Um Will can address that as well. Uh but they can't, they don't necessarily know if that is going to happen. It could be a lesser amount. Um well, if you have any other. So we don't have that offset right away budget. So this is kind of a worst case scenario for CASP, uh just because we.
That transfer.
That.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Or is this in C dot?
It's both, but it's primarily feds um to the tune of ninety percent, then five percent is the state at C dot. But then I just wanted to make the point that at the end of the year, then we wash those together and ensure that. The revenue offsets the expenditure here. But if you're looking at just this, it could be rather alarming. Considering that a lot of good portion, a lion's share, I would even say, of C I P at CASP is funded elsewhere.
All good. The other projects you want to highlight?
Completely up to you guys. Uh you know, it's broken out by fund. You'll see the golf course fund uh in there. We always, the golf course fund. Is fully self sufficient, so anything they request uh is offset by their operations. They bring, they do good in their operations. And so we don't really usually have a concern around the golf course fund. Um the fleet fund next, uh again, it's just projects that we are getting for the different uh areas such as the general fund. Um so they'll usually have a transfer in for those. Uh road and bridge, um we wanna talk about that a little bit, I mean, that's a, I, their area is a little larger, but you know, they have ongoing projects every year that just continue to go through different phases, so they're usually uh okay with their care, we're usually okay with their carryover amounts as well, and not many questions around them.
So I did wanna flag for you real quick, um on those last bits, the ARPA update is coming to you very shortly, we've closed out all of the tier one funding for that, yay, we'll celebrate, it'll be fun. And but um that will continue as something that's just noted in our revenues and expenditures matching like they do, it'll continue through the performance period, which is at the end of twenty twenty six. But just wanted to flag that for y'all, that you'll get a much more in-depth status report and going over again of the dashboard here in about a week or so, I think.
Okay, great.
And then just very quickly, we're just pausing on the CASP projects, um that we were just talking about, all of the projects that are related to CASP as well as Flat Rock, you know, we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago about Flat Rock and some of the projects that you all just approved for Flat Rock um are also. As we mentioned, we just hate having this presented in public hearing on the twenty fourth. Uh but again, if you have other questions about particular projects or want, you know, more walkthrough of what we're carrying forward, why we're carrying forward that kind of thing, we're happy to, to follow up with that, so please let us know and we'll be ready for the amendment.
And if there's a question around a project, uh you know, I obviously see there's a, it's pretty large, if there's a question around a project, um if the board is open to it, we'd rather move forward with the bulk of the amendment and get that approved, as there are a lot of these projects already ongoing, um and we can always pull something out, but we'd rather get the bulk of this approved on the twenty fourth and then just pull out onesie twosies or whatever the computers uh wanna review and maybe hold off. We can always add it to a later amendment as well, this doesn't, this isn't the end all be all. If we wanna do it on the second amendment, you know, with all the F T Es and whatever, we can do that as well.
I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Requests. And um, and uh you all wanted kind of an overview of our budget, which we have come and done. Uh so we are asking to move forward with these external requests, we, we did um alter that request based on your feedback from last time, these are all project designated versus um regular full-time employees. And so uh, yes, and then we found an additional grant, and I just again want to um ground the board in the fact that the health department will have um normal out-of-cycle um F T requests, given the the way that our grants operate, so. Thank you, um we just went through all of this.
You got like fancy new fonts and stuff, so look at you go.
So, right, so this is the uh new request, uh we put in a grant to C P A, the statewide internet for uh portal authority to just uh assist with some of the work that's in our strategic plan around developing uh data infrastructure. So uh this is work that we have planned, and it's fabulous that we are now being funded to do this work. Um and so we are adding a, uh we're requesting a, one uh project designated employee um with the cost, the total personnel cost of that out. Um and the total word you can see there, uh using this funding that has a two-year term, so we're asking for the position uh for that two-year term. It is around, uh and this will be in our epidemiology and data science division after Adam Anderson. Any questions about that one? Pause there?
No.
Um and then we're going to revisit the O P H P funding, this is state funding from the state health department, it is foundational funding, it is one of our more flexible funding sources. Uh most of our grants are very specific in terms of uh what they're paying us to do. Uh this funding is meant for local public health agencies to provide core public health services in the way that we see fit, and so this is a great grant. Um we are not hearing any inclination that this funding will be substantially cut. In fact, um the J B C has been very supportive of retaining this funding for local public health. Uh this, the state health department has um in a previous budget conversations proposed cuts to this and uh retaining more of it within C D P G to cover um losses that they've had. And the J B C has uh been very strongly uh influential in keeping this funding for local public health for delivery of services boots on the ground. And so in this case, we are asking, um we have these two positions, the health enrollment specialist and the registered dietitian who's a supervisor. We have both of these people on staff now, they are in part-time positions now, they're um a quality, asking, and are asking to be brought up to full-time. The, the grant from O P H P pays for that uh more than enough, and we're just trying to bring up uh uh two part-time people to full-time, so two quarter positions uh together, making a half a position. Uh we would need your approval because of position control. Um so our education team, this is under our division, uh nursing, or I'm sorry, nutrition and family health division. They have multiple, they brought in multiple grants to piece together uh one additional F T for a health educator, that's project designated, um this person is proposed to be providing screenings and address socioeconomic barriers. Help client resource navigation for our clients that enter our uh programming through the nutrition and family health division. Uh most li- likely uh through our diabetes prevention program that already exists, grant-funded. Um and really trying to increase that screening for cardiovascular health, um and increase that connection with those uh diabetes prevention uh clients into uh navigation and uh social determinant of health screening is what this health educator would do. And then this is a, a large new grant, um the social health information exchange, the, the original funder of this um is C M S, at the federal level, it's passed through H I C P U F at the state. Um the term of this fi- uh funding ends in June of twenty twenty eight. Um we're showing year one um award amount and the total award amount, and we have five project designated F T requests associated with this grant. Um the grant is a technology grant, it's uh looking for technology solutions to help link people to care. Um and we are trying to work with the uh sheriff's office and the jail to help support folks coming out of incarceration and uh helping to get them the right uh social supports needed to help them thrive once they're out. Um we, this was a competitive grant, and we were a number of local public health agencies and the states that applied and were receiving this funding. Um I know there's a lot of uh cross-connection with Brimfield and some other L P H A's in the area as well. So we are asking for three community health workers, uh these folks would be working with that um uh those folks exiting incarceration to do social determinants of health screening uh for clients exiting and um the caseload is really for high acuity clients, um typically these folks are going to have a lot of uh social needs and supports. Then we uh to support the creation of the referral system that we're talking about, again, this is a technology grant, we have one health informaticist and one application program analyst, uh which will be doing uh like I T application management and working with the I T I department. Um we're looking at using a cloud-based uh software system for this. And this is also meant to be a proof of concept for something that potentially could be expanded to other populations in the future. Through the summary slide, um total funding coming in with these grants. Um total personnel expenses with all of them, again, uh based on feedback from March's study session. We moved these all to project designated and uh yes, no general fund being used whatsoever for these positions.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you very much. And then just uh, just to give you all a heads up, uh there's some other new funding that we brought in, uh that do not include any external F T requests. Uh we were received about forty-eight thousand dollars um for Healthy Brain Initiative, we're really about working around healthy aging and uh Alzheimer's disease prevention work. Uh and then our tobacco funding, the step funding comes from the state, there was an increase in that amount. Um which really is around uh implementation of community-oriented tobacco control strategies, a lot of work with municipalities in that regard. Uh our food systems um team brought in some funding uh for our food system collective to work on a plan for resilient food infrastructure. And then our tax prep site, which uh aims at the social determinants of health of um you know, just increased uh income, uh gained uh an amount of eighty share, which we have a bunch of metrics for you all to share on that, so those are uh other examples of grants we bring in that don't have related F T requests, but help bolster the programming. Any questions on those?
Um not really question, more of a comment, I love to see you guys pick up the tax prep site, that used to be hosted by a treasurer. Obviously, we had four years of not a great relationship with the treasurer, so really nice to see that being picked up. Looking for it, Nikki, if we can cross-promote that, I think folks are gonna really need the help.
Great, yeah, and uh I, I'm happy to share the outcome measures that we have from that site, it's um felt, it's fantastic and uh our staff that uh help set up the, the program are presenting nationally at national conferences on the success of that program, so.
Great, that'd be great.
I, I just would like to say tha- thank you for um taking our feedback from March. Um I'm very excited and very grateful for the funding you have secured for all these positions. Having all these positions, positions be project funded is, I, I feel like is where we is where we are, it's just where we are now, and it's where I think it makes the most sense for us to be. Uh of course, this can be a much bigger conversation, but for today, I just wanna say thank you very much for, for hearing us on that and uh doing, making the most of the opportunities you have to, we have to serve the community through all your funding, grant funding, thank you very much.
You know, thank you.
No, y'all are great, thank you, thank you very much. Oh, hey, could we have a digital copy of the flyer you gave us last time you were here? About the federal funding impacts, you gave me a handful, I gave them all away, and I don't have any. And then I went looking for a digital one, I couldn't find it. You guys did a slightly different analysis than our team did, but similarly impactful.
Yes, are we speaking about the Medicaid specific one?
That, yes, but if you had other information you felt was important for us to know, so that we could also share your analysis, that would be helpful.
And commissioners, as I mentioned, Kelly and I are in discussion about, you know, working and developing our strategy together for how to engage over the next several months. So I shared that update with the commissioners this morning, and we'll continue that work together.
Um, yeah, I, I think there's just a lot of folks who are really, obviously, we're all very concerned.
Love to do a little education round. Vaccinations, oh jeez.
Well, that too.
Filling in one of the many gaps.
Yeah, but we're finding ourselves facing. But isn't it true that like one of the problems with the budget changes is that vaccinations might no longer be free and or required by insurance, that's half the problem?
We are, we're tracking on that, we have not received any major notification that our funding will be cut. Um but yes, uh some of the foundational vaccine programs, vaccines for children, other programs are at risk at the moment, so.
One of these days your job will be easy, Kelly, and I wanna be there for that moment.
Yeah, we need help from our federal lobbyists on these.
That's where Kristen comes in.
Yeah, we're gonna set up, I think Jillian mentioned to me that we're gonna set up like a weekly meeting, that the health department will help, will meet together with us and with our D G A team, so we just feel like there's a need to do a whole lot more of that over the next several months. So we're working on getting that set up, that's my understanding, that's what Jillian reported, so.
And I would love to include human services in that as well.
Yeah. I'm gonna sit in the hall talking to Katie, but the same thing, then I jumped back in last minute here. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, do you guys know who won the pride t-shirt contest this year?
Uh no, I hope not, because it's you, we had uh two, we had two winners for this year.
Those are the best shirts, I can't wait to see. They do, they have the best shirts.
Awesome, they're softs too.
They're, yes. I do know, I have all of them, I've got a little collection. Thanks.
We go to four P.
Brian, Dylan?
Oh, was that on the light?
No, part to the board. Oh, that's just you, I thought, I was like, you're doing a presentation, Erica.
I love that, no.
She's like spare.
Not today.
Missioners, I do have one update on lightning round, um and when the D A gets here, we can talk about it, and your questions earlier about when the D A was going to bring forward. We were gonna go back.
Yeah, yeah.
Four positions, and I, after looking through my notes, I realized we meant to include those in the presentation today and our focus on the twenty twenty four requests, they got, they got dropped off, uh but we were prepared to recommend um approving those positions, and we can add that to a, a memo for you all with more details, or we can talk about it more today, but we actually today was what we had um originally planned, and it just fell off the, the presentation, so. We'd like for Brian to be able to move forward if he.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm, yeah, I'd like, I know it's, I know it's kind of, it's in time. It's a taken pass.
Okay.
The take on a pass, thank you for that update beyond, I assume that you did the best of your ability, gave the D A many resources as we could possibly allocate, similar to the sheriffs, unfortunately, their volumes are quite high, I don't mean high. We were discussing D D H R T and like some of the other things, like.
That's right. So if it's all right with you, I can send a memo over with the um but we would like to include those.
Let's move that forward.
For the amendment.
Team, what, uh D N was asking if um she can just include the be personnel for the D A, for the district attorney in the budget.
The D D H R T team.
Yes, the September. And just send us, just send us a memo.
Send you a memo with the actual budget impact for those four.
That's good, thank you, cause that's separate from Aurora, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Also important, okay, just have people not die. You're up, Brian. People not die. Yeah, to the best of our ability, create systems that make sure people don't die.
That is, that is always our goal on the red way, so. Uh so today, we are uh uh going to have Michelle take the reins uh and present on the four P process in cooperation with Commissioner Hanson. Uh so they, they have a strategy to present uh for tomorrow's four P presentation with uh C dot. And uh I think Michelle is much more uh prepared than I am to speak to the topic, so I will, I will stop talking and let her take the take the show from here.
Hey, everyone, great to be here, um so we're here to talk about, and it, it, it is not cool, but the Allen County regional priorities uh for C dot roadways, uh and as part of the project priority programming process, four P. Uh so a little bit about what this is and why it's important, so uh every ten years, C dot updates their strategy plan, um and the framework that they use to update this is the four P process, so it's, it is the process. Um and C dot is currently updating their strategy plan. The one we are currently working off of right now is for the years twenty nineteen to twenty twenty seven. And their strategy plan really identifies at the project levels what they will work on um over, over the next ten years, and then they also have it prioritized for uh the first and second four-year increments as well. Uh and then what they call the out here, so kind of everything beyond those first four years. Uh and they go through the, the level of identifying funding sources for those prioritized projects. Uh and I'd say at the staff level, oftentimes when we talk to C dots, you know, if Uh, and I'd say at the staff level, oftentimes when we talk to CDOTs, you know, if there is something we're interested in and it's not in the ten-year plan. We'll sometimes hear, you know, that's not on the ten-year plan, we can't necessarily work on it. So that's really why this, this pro- this process is important. And then there is room for local jurisdictions to voice their priorities, uh, for what they would like to see CDOT to work on, on their roadways. Um, and that is, uh, one component of the meeting that is being held tomorrow night. So I think like I, I just said, we are currently on the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty seven, uh, ten-year plan and we are. Uh, moving into the twenty twenty seven to twenty thirty-six year plan. So that's what's currently underway and this four P process, to put a little bit more context in it, has been going on for a while too. So, uh, some other counties have already gone through this process last year, so it's a very long process. And we're providing our inputs more towards the end of that process, just logistically, so. CDOT's hoping that that twenty twenty seven to twenty thirty-six year plan will be adopted in December of this year. Uh, so they're wrapping up their engagement. The avenue through which the local jurisdictions in Adams County, in addition to the county, have been organizing is. Organizing for tomorrow night's meeting and for the regional priorities that we want to voice to CDOT is through the county's subregional transportation forum. Another mouthful of words, but this is the county's group of both technical staff and elected officials. Uh, at the county level and then with each local jurisdiction in the county too, and this group comes together. Uh, our cadences every other month and we organize around conversations like tip applications when the Dr. Cog cycle comes up. And also this four P process. So the work that has been put into the scenes, behind the scenes, has been, the local jurisdictions have been aligning on. What to present to CDOT and how to present it, so it's most impactful. And so what you'll see in this memo on the last couple of slides, let's see, starting on page four is this, is the slide deck. That the local technical staff and everyone's running it through their elected officials with their internal processes. Um, are preparing to present to CDOT tomorrow night for both regional priorities, uh, and we're, we're defining regional priorities. As parties where more than one jurisdiction thinks this is important and needs to be escalated to CDOT. Uh, and then there will also be a chance for each jurisdiction to voice additional priorities, if there's things outside of this. Um, I'd say the regional priorities aligned with public works as priorities that we presented to the UCC back in February. So there isn't really anything out of, uh, the blue here. There are a few kind of bigger picture items though. Uh, the, let's see, if you head over to page eight and page nine, oh, sorry, actually nine. Uh, transit needs in Adams County and. County, we didn't explicitly talk about these at our February study, study session with you all, but. You know, local jurisdictions thought these are important to point out, they're a little higher level, uh, with what the actual asks are to CDOT. So, uh, and then I think specifically Commissioner Henson, I'll be working with you tomorrow night. And those specific slides, I, those big stars on and some suggested talking points, you know, feel free to make them your own, but that is where we're.
Yeah, that should be fine, no problem, thank you.
Open, uh, happy to answer any questions, your discussion items or.
They're gonna go easy on you today. Don't look a gift personal now.
Like I always call you tomorrow, cause I mean, it's not till the evening, so I, I'll take a look at these, the talking points. Sure, I can.
So I did have a couple of questions. So Thornton's gonna discuss the I twenty five as a regional priority.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, that's, they're, they're very focused on.
Yeah, and, and not to say it's not our priority, but we're trying to organize, there's a lot of people in the room and speaking roles for everyone.
Just make one observation, and that is, uh, Brian paid you a high compliment. When he said that, Brian is one of the most prepared guys I've ever known in any situation, when he said that you're more prepared than him. I dig that as high praise.
Michelle is excellent in the, the regional transportation space, but we also very much value her in all things transportation planning, so. We, we very much appreciate her on the team and as, as support to the commissioners and all the things that you're giving in, in the transportation space.
And you have a great team and it'll be nice to get on, I think I'm gonna miss your regional transportation planning meetings this month. Which is really a bummer, but, um, agree, update meeting, I don't even know if we've had one such.
We, we have, but we couldn't, we had a con.
Oh. So on I twenty five, kind of away from the four P meeting tomorrow. And I don't know, I'm not, I haven't been part of the NADA group this year. Of really restarting that strategically, that discussion, I mean, I feel like the change in executive directors, that the focus. I feel lack of focus. I, I don't know if that's, uh, just me. Thinking that, I mean, Karen Stewart was so on it about regionalism, about inviting congressional delegation and consulting firms to come in. Not, people tied to specific projects, those firms, um, to come in and talk about the project, advocate for different corridors. Um, hopefully we can get back to that on NADA, like what is our circle of influence? And Karen was really good about identifying. Who regionally in Adams County, um, also Weld County Erie, folks that are, you know, that are helping us along. Several corridors, like where are we placed in different, whether it's a state committee, a government appointed committee, a local committee. Um, I would just like to see that focus again. I feel like I twenty five is just kind of floundering a little bit. I don't think it's us, I think it's RTD and there's something on those bus stations on like eighty fourth, eighty-eighth Avenue, I think. That it's, there was not agreement and so it kind of, CDOT just kind of, I felt like they stepped back, like we're not gonna get into that. That neighborhood mess over there, um, which is fine, so those are my thoughts.
Do you wanna speak to what Nate, to NADA, with what's happening at NADA?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So I, I think a quick update for what's happening with NADA is that the I twenty five North Coalition approached NADA a couple. Probably two months ago and, um, was looking to have an MOU in place to align NADA with. Some of I twenty five's goals around I twenty five.
Okay.
And so that should have been an ongoing conversation at NADA to unders- understand kind of the details of that and what that looks like. But I think the general thought is, Commissioner Henson, feel free to correct me.
Well, yeah, it's kind, it's kind of, we want that I twenty five, um, north of the city and county of Denver is. Is, is, is such a major artery for, for so many people that. I, I twenty five North Coalition and NADA are, we are, they're, they're going to give us some support in advocating for section two, which is critical. And then, um, and also then three B up, which is up, outside, kind of outside of NADA's boundaries really, but also. That we, that those, both of those segments are really important. Um, they put together a one pager that I gave some feedback on at the last day of the meeting because they were trying to highlight the growth along I twenty five and the importance of that. And they did it by percentage, which by percentage showed Adams County having this much growth and. City of Broome Field and Weld County having, and I said, I, my feedback was that we needed actual population numbers.
By, by volume and percentage.
Because I, because segment two still has, I contend, more traffic on it. And it's where, and it's confluence of so many roadways. So I shared that feedback and I will, we should probably, could all probably all reach out to. NADA, maybe, I don't know if we're gonna do it as a board or whatever, but just to say that we really need to show those numbers. So that, that, that conversation, that's where NADA and I twenty five North Coalition are sort of, we are trying to advocate. For I twenty five in that area.
That's really interesting, um. Not identifying is the I twenty, I twenty five North Coalition, um, the Weld County Commissioners, particularly Scott James.
He's been our point.
Also, people in Erie, I can't remember the gentleman's first name, I think his last name's Hernandez, have been very active about. Offering support and then very quickly saying, and we want you to support our interchange. And the board, previous board of county commissioners navigated that to say, you know. They have beautiful intersections everywhere north of highway seven that go to open fields and they have transit that. And RTD, um, connectivity and, you know, a park and ride and a roundabout for RTD of like. Oh, and right here is gonna be Amazon. I was like, we have nine of the Amazons in the state or in Adams County, like, are you kidding me? So I'm just concerned about the political angle of, hey, we're here, Trojan horse to help you out. And then turn around and make an ask of, and will you support our interchange? Because we tend to fall off that list of priorities, we're the kink in the hose, so you have improvements down south, south of, um. Downtown Denver, we have improvements north of highway seven and CDOT's partners collectively. Um, individually cannot seem to come together on advocating for the whole corridor where it is a safety problem. Where there is changes in grade, there is, there are no shoulders in portions of I twenty five, so you can't get. Emergency vehicles through, you can't pull people over for speeding, it's just been a real challenge and.
No, I take your point.
The advocacy they wanna do, but.
That's, that's exactly the feeling I got when I saw the, the one pager that they put together. Quite frankly, I was offended.
Yeah.
Because I didn't feel that it was represented, it was fair representation of the population and the need to advocate for section. And, and the great need to advocate for section two, so.
I appreciate.
So I think, so that's, I, so I'm, I have my, I, I, I have the same concern.
I appreciate that, cause it feels like, um, here's, here's our presentation to you and we're gonna hold you under, we're gonna put you under the water. While we go forward and bump over you to advocate for our things.
So, um, thank you for that update. I know that the board divides and conquers when it comes to our various assignments. Even in the transportation space, but maybe there's an opportunity, Brian and or Kristen. Like going back to some of the conversations we were casually having over lunch, it's like, what does local government advocacy look like? Where's that coordination thread? How are we doing this intentionally without overburdening our transportation staff? Um, so yes, to everything y'all just said, but it also feels like a conversation in how do we advocate? More broadly across all the different forums, because we've brought this up around Dr. Cog, we've also brought this up on the US thirty-six Coalition. Uh, Front Range Passenger Rail, there's a number of these conversations where.
I agree.
In, in, you know, singing from the same hymnal could serve us and serve Adams County quite a bit.
Yeah, so just back to the slides, I appreciate that, Emma, very much, um, and that's part of the strategy we also talked about at lunch.
Right.
Very quickly, so on the Colorado seven, is the mobility hub far enough along that we don't mention this specifically? I mean, I know we did a groundbreaking.
Uh, I believe those are actually in the, um, key talking points that they have listed out and not necessarily explicitly on the slide. Okay. For CS seven.
Um, the US eighty-five and a hundred and twentieth intersection, so that is another major east-west corridor, so you have highway seven. You have one unit, um, and you have a hundred and fourth that actually have some connectivity, that's a big roadway intersection. Um, it also takes an offgrade from the railroad, I think was one of the primary things on that. Um, on item, or on the slide for I seventy east, I don't know if we wanna add that ARDA and I can't read the cross-section. Roadways, it's too small, um, do we wanna add ARDA as a partner on that? That's just a question. I don't know if those intersections include any portion of ARDA.
Does it extend far enough south to be a, a critical partner, ARDA district?
Wouldn't be a terrible idea.
Funding some of the intersection, some of the interchanges, um, and then.
Worth adding to the chalk.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, yeah, I think ART is definitely paying for at least one of these interchanges.
That's it.
Maybe as a collaborative partner.
Yeah. Just cause it's excessive, yeah.
So, thank you, Kathy, for representing us.
You bet. Thanks for passing.
Well, and. On Karen Stewart's departure, uh, I think it's Terry Hart, who's, uh, backfilling for Karen Stewart on the commission. Um, who I, I don't know at all, um, so we might consider, I'll, I'll work with Janet to do some outreach and. And do a, a meet and greet or make some connections. I don't know if that's a partial term or a, a regular appointment. So I'll get some more details on our, our regular, uh, transportation commission back bill. Um, and, uh, and get them in here to, uh, to hopefully, uh, uh, talk with you about their priorities and how they'll, uh. How they'll fill Karen's shoes moving forward.
Great, thank you. Anything else? No, nope.
No.
Take care. Thanks, Michelle, thanks, Brian.
And Wendy has a quick case, AC rep thing and then Sunny is here.
Well, good afternoon, commissioners, I have two items for you. The first is AC rep, so Lisa Hoff reached out, there are three AC rep. Groups slash committees where, uh, they wanted us to come to you all to ask for an appointee and an alternate, and so. Go on now. The first, well, I'll read all three so you have a sense, it's the Civic and Business Alliance, they're looking for an alternate. And then an appointee and an alternate, the business advocacy and public policy, same thing, appointee and an alternate, and then the board of the. Or, uh, one appointee, so I wanted to come to you all so we could, of course, uh, send names back to AC rep. It's helpful to share a little bit more on all three, I'm, I'm happy to do that too.
I'm familiar with a couple of them.
Okay.
Um, I'd be happy to serve, I don't know.
Did we, I thought we decided early.
Early on.
Yeah, who, who was the two that we assigned, that we just said AC rep generically, we didn't, wasn't these three groups specifically, so.
Exactly.
You'll probably take more than two of us to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so on the resolution for twenty twenty five, the boards and commissions for you all, it was Adams County, um, Regional Economic Partnership Executive Council. And we put Commissioners Baca, Henson, Odericio on Pinter on that, that's all we have on E, as far as AC rep on twenty twenty, twenty twenty five.
Um.
It'd start with the board and then work to the committees.
The board, the board, Commissioner Pinter, I'm sure you're familiar, the, what is now being called their Board of Directors, used to be their leadership circle. This is a general governance board is what it will be, and for that, they're hoping for one appointee.
Kathy, do you wanna take that one?
The board of directors, do you know, when do they meet?
Yes, they meet, um, I've, I have two answers to that, so I will, I will confirm with AC rep, one is they meet every other month, one is that they meet quarterly. But what I do know is the next meeting is August fourth. To me, from what I can tell, it's August fourth and then every other month there.
But they meet on Tuesdays, that's why, that's why we're not participating.
Two thirty.
I was sure that, is that a Tuesday?
No, it's Monday.
It's a Monday.
Yeah, I don't remember those.
I thought there were, I thought.
August fourth is a Monday, so.
Okay, so it's a Monday, all right.
So are you staying on, Emma?
No, I thought, I thought I had transferred, which is part of where we all went around, because I thought I had transitioned leadership, actually to Kathy. That was my recollection.
I thought it was, I'm happy to do it, I think, I thought there was, I thought, I, I. I did recall that you were not, that, yeah, the, the two people who were on it.
That it was really hastily done, with her, the appointments and it was kind of like.
Wearing like thirty of them.
Yeah.
Um. Ca- Kathy's boss applesauce, she's gonna be the chair for the next few weeks anyway, so she should definitely be.
This one's only one week, just saying.
Wouldn't make it trapped, I guess, we don't know.
We need, well, we need to know when the, when these, when they meet, when these streets, because that might impact the use even available.
It's, it's, it is Mondays, I just need to, I, I received two answers from AC rep, one says they meet quarterly on a Monday at two thirty and one says they meet every other month, Monday at two thirty. So that's the part I need to confirm with them.
Mondays are usually good for me, so wherever I'm needed, I'm happy to help.
This is, I'm specifically referring for this one to the Board of Directors.
Okay.
Which, 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 which used to be the leadership circle and is now transitioning to a governance board, Board of Directors. That one they'd like one appointee. So Commissioner Henson, am I hearing that is?
I I'll do it. I'll do it.
Okay. And then the other two that Lisa uh just requested names for are the Civic and Business Alliance. That one means quarterly as well. And the Business Advocacy and Public Policy Group.
The BAP.
The BAP, that means every other week.
The BAP stressed me out. I prefer to do the other one.
Okay.
I wish you, CBA.
Can I do the CBA?
Would you like to be the appointee?
Sure.
Or the alternate?
Happy to be the appointee.
Okay.
Just gonna claim it, otherwise you're gonna pick the BAP. There's only three of us.
I'm like, I'm wondering how I'm ending up at the end of this line, but that's okay.
You could like punch back and be like, no, Emma, I'm taking the civics one. Take, take your medicine and take the BAP again. Here's the problem with the BAP. The problem with the BAP is that frequently. The business community, in about seventy percent of situations, wants to take a different position than the county has taken. And it requires a tremendous amount of diplomacy. Because I felt really awkward telling them when everyone agreed. To be like, well, actually, the county is over here. And. They all listen. But it requires a fair amount of diplomacy because I don't think it's fair. To get in the way of the business group. To have them fall in line with the county position. They deserve a voice too. But occasionally, there was an alignment that I felt was worth advocating for.
What year was that?
She made a good argument to put her on that committee as chair.
No, I mean, when did, when did you serve on? Because they, AC rep is different staff.
No, it's the same staff.
It was during leases.
It's at least century set. Yeah, I I I stopped going a couple months back. Um, so I don't think I did this last session, but I did the prior. They're very nice. And I think the biggest problem is that once the county says their position, they then wanna move to our position.
Conversation.
But then that chills the conversation. I do think the business community is entitled to their own voice. So it's a lot of diplomacy of like, here's the county position, but also we wanna hear. What you all think, but then occasionally. We really did vehemently disagree with them and I wanted them to understand a nuance that they were possibly not hearing. So.
So, so.
It was incredibly awkward about seventy.
Avoidance, got it, check.
It just, it was just like, I I think I would put it about seventy percent of the time. It required a high degree of diplomacy to nurture that business voice. I I can take it back.
No, I could date, I mean.
If you want me to, I can.
I've not done any engagement with AC rep since I've been a commissioner, so I would like to be a part of it.
Great, and they work with Mariah from Seawold Hand Flight.
Yeah.
Who's lovely.
Yeah.
So, so I have you Commissioner Baca for our um primary for the Business Advocacy and Public Policy.
For this year, yes. And I'm not sure how.
Notice she picked it up after leg session was over.
They proposed after the leg session.
Wrong Lisa pick. I don't think they would meet that often the entire year.
No.
That's just during session.
They were shooting by week or every other week during session, but I believe it's much less outside of session, so.
Nicole Milo and Troy Whitmore usually run that, but Troy just retired, so I don't know who the new Troy is. And 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 Nicole is just so nice and so is Mariah and 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 you know, Teresa and Lisa are as well, so.
May I also ask please for an alternate for both the Civic and Business Alliance and the Business Advocacy and Public Policy.
Can we just put Steve and Julie?
Sure. It it up to you all, of course. Okay, is there one that you think?
Do you wanna be an alternate like to the CBA? You wanna do both of those things?
It sounded like at one point two, at least two of them were meeting at the same time, just different.
CBA is, CBA is quarterly. And the BAP Business Advocacy and Public Policy, to Kristen's point, is more during legislative uh session and not. Is usually in the morning, so I don't think there's overlap there.
We think in the week, is it though?
BAP?
Yeah.
I believe they were doing them Wednesdays.
Um, if Julie and Steve aren't already representing AC rep, I'm happy to be an alternate.
I don't believe they are. These are the only three boards where AC rep is asking for particular commissioners to be appointed. So we'd like to put Steve and Julie on one of each? Or would you like to be on one man?
No, let's do one of each and we all.
Yeah.
Have a.
Okay.
Steve and I used to do that together, so I'll know, I know that he knows like what's up with that.
Okay.
Um, but then he got busy and I was doing it alone, which was really fun.
So I'll put him as the alternate for BAP.
Sure.
And then Julie is the alternate for.
Civic, yeah.
Last question on this is, the way we were going about it now, Michelle and I, is we were trying to make sure that you were all receiving invites for. All AC rep events so that you were aware and could go when you'd like. Now that we're appointing folks to these, these three at least. Would you like just the two who are appointed to receive invites or would you all still like to receive all invites?
I think either, my preference would be the ones that we, the committees we serve on. I think that there's universal invites that. AC rep sends out that we probably all should be on those invites.
So outside of these three in particular, yourself, okay, got it.
Alright.
Thank you. And then the second item I have for you all is we just today, hot off the presses, received some info on um CCAT on the agenda for that.
Ah.
So it is August seventh and eighth, Thursday and Friday in Eagle County in in Avon, um Colorado. Leaving their town hall. Wednesday, August sixth, it kicks off with a happy hour at six PM. The seventh and the eighth are programming days, so the seventh eleven to five with the six thirty dinner, the eighth eight to two ends at two. So I believe what we know is that Steve Lynn and Emma are tentative and Kathy is a no.
Yeah.
Wanted to check in if anyone else has a.
It looks like the calendar stuff is kind of funky for that period, so I might just tell you yes. If that is the timeframe, um a welcome reception Wednesday night, Thursday, and then Friday during the day, I can attend that.
Okay, so yes to all three.
Yes, to CCAT.
Understood.
I will, I will see cat.
See cat. Commissioner Baca, we could come back to you if you need a.
No, I will, I'm, I have, I'm, I'll be out of town, starting on the sixth.
Of August.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Alright. And Commissioner Henson, I already have you as an help, so.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, well then, that's good that I'm going, I guess.
We have a tentative from Steve and we've not had a chance to talk with Julie yet, so we will do that.
If you could, um, with that information, particularly about the Wednesday, nudge Michelle to like update the calendar.
Yeah, we literally just got it.
Oh, hi.
Within the hour.
Hi, Michelle.
Yeah.
That makes sense cuz I know they're all like working on it and like chatting about it. I might have to leave a little early on Friday, assuming SEWAC stays where it is, but I think that there are several other SEWAC members at CCAT. So that should make sense. The WAC and the CAT are are different, but not the same, but not exclusive.
And then as you're all able, just please a reminder on SDA, Special District Association of Colorado. Which is September sixteen through eighteen, Tuesday through Thursday.
No, thank you.
No, thank you. I have you as a no thank you. Commissioner Henson, I have you as a no thank you.
No, no, it's special districts. That's what I said this morning, I think.
I have you as a no.
I saw it on the highway.
I have you as a no for ten county. My apologies.
Sorry, what did you say?
I have you as a no for ten county.
Yes, okay, correct. I'm also a no for ten county.
Yes, I have you as a no for.
Yeah, could be on that list too.
Mr. Baca, would you like a little more time with?
Yeah, I will, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And then lastly is um the Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce Leadership Exchange in Dublin. Which is uh Monday, September twenty second through Friday, September twenty sixth. We did confirm that any of our board can attend that. It didn't, it does not just have to be the the two who went last year to to the Charlotte event. The cost is fifty two hundred per person. This does not include flights. In this case, because it's an international trip.
So talk to me again about, like, it is the twenty sixth.
Twenty second, Monday, September twenty second through Friday, September twenty six.
Again, put me on that list.
Because right now it's on the twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, so that's. Just like a overscheduling, we scheduled it too early kind of a deal.
I will double, I'll double check with Michelle. That might have been as they confirmed information with us, so.
Correct.
We'll get that.
I'm gonna have to do some, some research on that one, okay? Lynn?
I am passing on Dublin because, is that what you mean?
Sort of, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna pass.
Okay, I'm doing research. Any of us can go.
Yes, well, I'll look, I'll look, I'll look into it, but I didn't mean I.
Okay. Lastly, uh, Rustlers is on a Tuesday, August twenty sixth. So just for quorum purposes, wanted to bring that to y'all. We don't have exact times yet, but from my memory, it's usually a full day event, starts early in the morning, so.
August twenty sixth?
Yes.
I do usually rustle.
Yes.
Yeah, I always see.
Are are there any days that the commission is off around there?
Don't believe so.
We could swap, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just thinking that, I'm just thinking if there's no other times that you're, that you're not having a meeting that are nearby. I feel okay just not to have a meeting that day.
I think we have done that before.
We have done that before.
We passed and cancelled.
Makes a difference, though, if you're taking the week before off and.
The only other time we might be off in that area is, so August twenty sixth is Rustlers and then it would be the second, the ninth. The sixteen, there is that overlap due to SDA and ten county. Cause SDA is the sixteenth through the eighteenth, which is a Tuesday through Thursday.
Went into September, right?
I did. So it'd be Tuesday, August twenty sixth would be Rustlers. Then you would have a September second meeting, a September ninth meeting. The next possibility for not having a meeting would be September sixteen due to SDA, if enough. Of our board goes to SDA, which right now we only have two yeses. So right now we have quorum for the sixteenth of September.
Says the guy who's not gonna be here, that's, you'd probably be okay to. That day if everybody wanted to go to Rustlers. My parting gift to you, Dion. Busy as heck.
Thank you.
You guys wanna decide on that now or would you like Lindsay to bring that back to you?
Yeah, yeah.
The rustled.
Oh, the Rustlers? I think we all wanna do Rustlers.
I think we all wanna do Rustlers.
Yes.
Let's say yes to that.
Unfortunately, it's one of those Denver events that's just.
So that week, no, you know, CCA decided.
Decided, we'll cancel August twenty sixth.
Yeah, yes, okay, yes, that's decided for August twenty.
And everyone has their matching shirts.
Oh, my god.
And then we'll, I'll come back to y'all in ca- if we do think we need to cancel. For Tuesday, September sixteenth due to SDA, after we get a chance to talk with Julie.
Yeah, there are a couple days of conversations.
Sixteen, we think we have, yeah.
Okay.
Can you connect with our um incoming county manager about the coordination to get her shirt and a hat?
Can do.
I don't have a shirt and a hat.
Me, you don't have a shirt and a hat?
Not actually. It's really good about if you register, I think they ask for it.
But like, if you don't have one, you need to register on the early side because.
What are their shirts?
Oh, it's a matching, it's a matchy-matchy event.
It's a whole, yeah.
It's a whole thing, yeah.
Yes, we'll, we'll make sure to get the board and Dion registered early for Rustlers. So that all uh fancy shirts will come with.
And can I add one more thing? Lindsay and I have been talking about, we'd like to come back to you and spend some time just calendaring um for the next few months. I know we did that a few months ago, but we've been talking about, you know, really current plus ninety days, you know, that concept and kind of mapping some things out. So we will be hopefully spending some, some time with you all to do that coming up here pretty soon, so we can. Get in front of what's coming up.
I like, yes, thank you.
It was very helpful when you were able to plan out Q two and Tuesdays for everyone's planning for the year.
That would be great.
Wonderful.
Okay, that's terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your shirt.
Point six.
Hi. Yes. How are you?
Good.
Good. Okay, well, I'm here in in lieu of of Mr. Mason today to talk about our budget amendments. Uh, we, I spoke with Ellie, our our new assistant left us our our new budget analyst. And um she's gonna be submitting budget needs on our behalf with the next upcoming amendment. And so I wanted to bring these before you all today so that you are aware. And and that that the first time you hear about the amendment is not when it's being submitted. So I'll start with uh. Sorry, excuse me. I'll start with uh our six, one for sixty thousand dollars. Um, this is actually, uh, I think it was an oversight on my part. We had this grant. This is a competitive grant that we get from diversion. Um, and we got these diversion funds in a grant fund. Uh, and I actually recognized the revenue um with the budget season last year. I forgot to recognize the. The expenditure side. And so this uh amendment is to actually recognize sixty thousand dollars on the expense side. Okay, and then we have a um, a budget amendment request for. Uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be recognized um on both the revenue and expense side. This is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that we got for a digital evidence project. And so what this grant um. Funds is, it is funding that creates innovative effective strategies to address unique consideration. Um, applicable to the collection of digital ed- evidence from victims. And so um, that is. A federal grant, and so we're asking for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be recognized in other federal pass through. And then to be applied on the expense side so that we can purchase the equipment, yes. Trains, this is a pretty collaborative uh grant that we have and we have lots of law enforcement agencies that we collaborate with. Uh, teach them how to use uh uh evidence collection tools. And how to be trauma informed in their responses to um collecting evidence, uh digital evidence from victims. Questions on that one? Okay, uh, on to the next. The next one is um. Same a budget amendment request to recognize forty two thousand three hundred and forty six dollars. Um, in both revenue and expenses. This is also from a grant that we received for victim um specialized victim services. So we were able to uh apply for grant funding for a half time victim advocate. To provide bilingual services to victims. And so that's uh what this is. Forty two thousand four thirty, forty two thousand three forty. And then we also have um a budget amendment request for twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, this would also be a net zero impact. This twenty five thousand dollars um would be coming from the city of Westminster. Uh, we've been in communication with them in regards, or Brian has been in communication with them. Uh, regarding the FJC and asking for municipalities to support our efforts in that way. And they committed to, uh, and at least initially, they have committed to twenty five thousand dollars. And we needed to recognize that as revenue and then actually. Uh, on the expense side as well to be able to expend it. And that twenty five thousand dollars, all the money would go to um. Some upfront costs for us getting started with the launch of the FJC.
Great.
And that is what I have.
Great.
Great. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Your story and you're sticking with it.
Story.
Uh huh, thank you. So those will be on a future amendment, uh, we'll see.
Did you rush over here or were you on the schedule?
I was on the schedule.
Okay, good. I was like, for a second, I thought like there was like a communication, I was like, did you rush over here?
No, I was on the schedule.
Okay.
I thought it was a little later.
We are ahead of schedule.
Yeah. Yes, a long earlier, so. But luckily I was already on my way.
Oh, good, 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 good. Thanks, Sunny. Are we done?
I think that's the end of our agenda.
I just have one update and I want to say here for return. It's really short. Um, we got this. Gust uh changed our state lobbyists and that has been communicated, so I just wanted to let you all know that that conversation has taken place. And uh the notice is going out today. Just wanted you to know, close the loop on that. And we'll begin our process probably in the next thirty days or less, but um I'll be in communication with the board. Probably via email, given schedules this month um around a proposed scope of work. And we're gathering um names of lobbyists that we plan to reach out to, to notify them of the opportunity and you're welcome to add to that list. So that we can make sure we're casting a wide net and we'll move forward from there.
I feel like I'm always surprised, like I have like people I'm familiar with and then one of these goes out and then I'm always surprised something, what shakes out?
I spend a bunch of time looking at the official registration and who represents what clients, just to generate ideas I wouldn't have otherwise thought of, so we're working. So we're working on putting together a broad list, um, and we will have, um, uh, Schultz will be still our official lobbyist until December first, that's the end date. And we've discussed, you know, a special session and needing to potentially have some assistance if and when that occurs, and so that's understood.
And that would be Alan, I presume?
I, I think that Eliza will be back, um.
Depending on when.
A little bit, yeah. It may be Alan, though, you're right, cause it just depends on the timing of all this.
Her timing and the federal timing and the governor's timing.
Yes, but I just wanted you to know the conversation's taking place.
Well, if the baby could just coordinate with the governor and the vets, like, it'll all work out.
I just wanted to add two things before we adjourn. First, thank you, and second, I'm sorry.
What did you do?
Thank you for the great opportunity, this has been really. I don't have words, this has just been really neat to get to know you guys and this fantastic staff to be part of the group for a while. And I'm sorry about whatever chaos I cause over the next two days.
I was like, I thought it was like. I'm on the way out.
I haven't broken it yet, but whatever I break in the next two days, be on quick.
Um, speaking of which, I know I sent it out during public hearing, but that message for employees, for you guys, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll let Nikki know she can get that out.
We only have the one, Nikki, we don't have both Nickies.
Yeah.
There you go, you can get it out.
Thank you, Dave, that's kind of you to say. We've certainly enjoyed you jumping in with both feet and embracing the Adams County community. I know we're a handful at times, so.
It's been part of the adventure. Right?
Oh, my god.
Been my pleasure, so, thank you, and I really will try not to break anything. But I don't make guarantees. Unless there's any commissioners' comments.
No. If we sit here long enough, we'll come up with something.
Let's leave.
Kristen, um, as you're doing the, here it is, as you're doing the RFP for the new lobbyists, can you remind me of what the role of the board is gonna be in that?
Yeah, the board decided not to participate directly in the, um, panel process. And so what we discuss is for you to take a look at the scope, so that if there are any changes or clarifications that you'd like to make, that's a good opportunity. And then if there are lobbyists that you'd like to have our purchasing team alert of the opportunity, you can share firms, names, et cetera. They would go through them, purchasing and purchasing would make sure that they got notice of the opportunity.
Can, can you send, it's going up a bid net, right?
That's right.
Can you send the board the link? The, because then we can just circulate in our groups as well, and then we're using the publicly available information. Um, I feel like there was another question. So do, should we then schedule some kind of executive session? Because it's a negotiation, um, to discuss the scope of work, or how are you gonna bring that back to us?
I think the scope of work, um, we'll just send to you via email, if you have confidence on it, or if you'd like to call me and share feedback, that would be a good way to do that. Um, I would, you know, be happy to do that in study session, I just don't think we'll have a chance to do that, um, because of our schedules. So I plan to make revisions to it and then share it with you via email and give you, you know, a week or more. That, we have plenty of time, to be honest with you, because we will be able to complete this well in advance of that December first date. But talking with purchasing, we can make the contract effective December first, so they'll know that that's the start date for their services. So we do have plenty of, plenty of time right now, but I wanna make sure we use the time we have, so we're getting to work on it immediately.
This is also when everyone gets up on commercial break and reassigns their seats and then sits back down.
Yeah, this is the time when we all do the shopping around a little bit, um. So I think it's good timing in a lot of ways, um, but I think we'll be able to get this done certainly by December first.
Yeah, and then federal is a renewal, and then Seville Hamfling is a renewal.
Yeah, those were, um, renewed, um, of, you know, essentially that January timeframe. All three of them were, um, went through the RFP process same time, and so those just continue on into the next year.
As we have that broader conversation of what does local and government engagement look like, I'd like us to intentionally have that with Seville Hamfling, cause that's part of, to be their scope.
Yeah.
And so I'd like to chat with them about it.
Okay, great.
Or chat internally and then chat with them, or?
Well, yeah, Deion and I have been talking about that, and I think we have a little bit of work to do and, um, any recommendations we'll make, and then we'll bring those to you. And we can talk about how we align our lobbyist strengths and skills and their scope and our contracts that we have already in place. How do we utilize those to the best ability that we have, so we're, we're currently discussing.
I'm gonna go into next session really wrong. That's how we are, talking a lot about how we can do that.
I love intentionality.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the only thing I have, sorry, is staying with the legislative portion for just a moment.
If you're gonna say what I'm thinking.
Is, I didn't even know where we were at. Someone mentioned, oh, Brian Mason.
It was a lunch yesterday.
It was lunch yesterday. Brian Mason said that, uh, he does reach out, he reaches out, they do outreach, um, Sunny's not here, to their, to our delegation, and they do lunch meetings versus a dinner meeting. And I actually like that a lot, cause I think, while they're at a, while they're also a breakfast. Um, now that they're at a session, it doesn't tie up their night to like, this family event, you know, enjoy their summer, whatever the case may be. Um, and then I had mentioned in DC during our lobbying trips, to have both of the US senators out to see the car to Aaron Spaceport, so Hickenlooper, um, has been a reg- more of a regular, um, but also Michael Bennett. And then I'm interested in, I don't think we're ready, but maybe we should have a discussion of what does state incentives look like from the Colorado Air and Spaceport, um, and then also take up the federal. Since we lost the entire commercial wing of the FAA, I think everyone but one person that we used to work with is gone. That we make sure that we s- um, have our priorities and or, mostly and. Um, if John with Dentons can reach out to those. The personnel we did work with at the FAA, if they can give us any insight on how we can be more strategic. Um, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but those are just some things that I thought of.
Okay.
I don't think we're gonna make the CCI, we just haven't vetted what state incentives look like, but at least we can start that discussion.
Talk to John about that.
So when you're talking about our delegation, you're talking about, we wanna schedule like, one, you know, one legislator at a time with, with the board type of thing? Or how, or maybe this is a conversation for, the thing to think about, how, how we reach out, so we can have some, you know, engagement time. And, you know, whether it's a lunch or breakfast, where we can put together a short agenda of the things that, you know, so that we're just increasing our communication and contact. Right, or before next session.
Historically, we've invited all of them, and the dinners just have not.
Well, that was the cons- right, and that's, I think that was the concern, is that, uh, they weren't making, the time that was scheduled wasn't valuable. Was turned down for a while.
They were during the winter, and usually. Session started, at least one year we caught them before the session started, and I feel like a summer engagement might go over a little easier that they're not pressed for time and holidays and prepping for the session. Um, I'm also open, I know it's only three of us today, I'm also open to inviting them to, like, Boots and Birdies. I think we should have them at our business event, we should invite them to the fair. Um, we're a little late for Stars and Stripes this year, we're late for Pride, to invite them out. Um, I just think that if they know what's going on in district, that they would have a greater tendency to attend. And I think that Boots and Birdies would be.
About our general, are you talking about congressional?
Mostly state.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was referring to, too. I just wanted to make sure we were talking about state, okay.
Do we have, I like what Lynn's saying, this is where, like, I feel like we know what to do when it's live session. Or like, we know what to do when we're going to NACO. But I feel like we sometimes don't do the intentionality of just like the courtesy of, hey, y'all, here's the summer lineup of Adams County events, you know, Veterans Day Memorial, Pride, Stars and Stripes. Make sure I'm getting the order right, you know, Adams County Fair and Festival Latino, and just like, what, and Veterans Day is November, right?
Veterans is in November, even the back, the HSE back to school.
Yeah, that one's great.
That one is great.
That one's really, I'm upset this year, I'm very, very upset, cause I love that event, and then I love the Christmas one. The North Pole is great, so like, inviting them, like, what does, but their, their email boxes are full, and so what does that look like? Usually I just text people, and I'm like, hey, and, and maybe that's what needs to happen, but.
Or maybe it's a tag team type of thing, like, once we know that an email invite has gone out, or we, or, or. And that the ev- event is approaching, then we also can do personal outreach from the. I think there's a lot of value in using the, like, all the off-season, um, to really kinda stage what you want to influence going into the session. You know, they're, they're starting to prep early bills already and doing some of that work, which, you know, if there's opportunities for us to define that legislative agenda that we've been talking about, start shopping it around in the fall and having those conversations and inviting them, especially at some of those events, human services. You know, where we have a lot of community need, I think would be really good use of our time and the, the Gov Affairs team. Um, some groundwork ahead of time, so I agree, I think this is a really good time to, to do all of it. It's hard, decent work to get in front of them and slow down the train that's gonna start in January, you know, like, it's, it's hard to do that. And holiday, actually, it's really hard to make a prep, like, to, to get, have those conversations really stick about, hey, this is real, this is what Adams County's thinking about for live session.
I also would be okay, this is up for discussion for the board, is hearing from Jillian, like, who are those? Focus a lot on our delegation, and there are sixteen of them, of the state level. Some of them don't identify with us at all, because sixty percent of their district is in another county. But we also have allies out there that have helped us on bills, or they, we align with them more closely on values than maybe. Reps, I don't know. Um, I'd be interested from Jillian, like, who has helped us that we can also invite to these different types of events? To build our brand raising. Oh, okay, did I say something?
No.
No.
Actually, I did think, see, the lot we said, we should have, y'all should have run away, I have one more. I have one more que-.
No, I just didn't want you to.
So the, the lodging tax that passed this session, um, I'm curious. I know staff are very busy, I'm curious if anybody's had a time, chance to look at that, is looking at it to talk about how we, when, how, when and how we can, might, will move, take, make a move on that.
I love this. I bring it up like every eighteen months. Um, I think that usually those, that, those lodging taxes fund a convention or visitors bureau. And at some point, there might be a tipping point where we have Dick's Sporting Goods Park, we have the Gaylord, we have Waterworld. Like, what does, like, a convention and visitors bureau look like advocating for convention centers in what settings? Do we need to pick a lane, like, um, just, I just would like us to open up conversation. There was talk for a while about, um, astronaut boot camp at Colorado Air and Spaceport, I don't know what happened with that. Cause it was one of those things that was brought up and I never heard about again, so I don't know if it's just like an idea, but like, what, you, you know, you've met Raymond Gonzalez, so it's fine. There's zebras at the park.
E-four seventy and.
But like. But like, I, Kathy's totally right.
Penguins.
And that is on a recording now.
Kathy's totally right.
Woo, twice.
And when we do the lodging tax, it generally has to be for one of those purposes. We did use it in Westminster for median improvements, which are lovely, and that actually technically is beautification and welcoming to community. It does enhance community attractiveness, but you can also be really intentional. And I, I don't know, I'm like, what is our tipping point about a convention and visitors bureau? And then could we negotiate that with AC Rep? Do we run that ourselves? Is that a third party? I'm just, let me just put it out there. Like, people do it all kinds of ways.
Yeah.
One thing I'll just put out there is, as you recall, at the end of the jail conversations, this series of study sessions, we recommended that in the twenty-sixth budget, we hire a public affairs consultant to help us with messaging and preparing an education campaign.
Yeah.
It's possible that we could use that or similar, um, contract to help us identify messaging, education, stakeholder-ing partnerships and things like that for a lodging tax, too. I think those are the same types of folks that would probably advise us on that, and so if that's of interest, we can explore that.
And short-term rental regulations, which will allow us to add them, because there are more of them than you think.
Yeah, and we were set up to speak on those recently, but had to bump that out.
That's coming on a study session.
We are bringing that back, and we can bring the bones of how a lodging tax would work, just fundamentally the technical piece. But the piece that Kristen's mentioning, to actually take the temperature and how would we run it? And how would it apply? That's dead on, that's the piece we haven't been able to get at, that would really help.
Well.
And this recent bill did definitely expand it, allowable use. Yeah, what, really, what are the? It used to just be, I, I've just pulled this up from, but it used to just be advertising and marketing of tourism, housing, and childcare for tourist-related workforce or facilitating enhancing visitor experience. This bill added public infrastructure maintenance or improvements, and enhancing public safety measures by funding local law enforcement, fire departments. I think it would be great if we could just, let's talk and plan to come back on the broader, like, mechanism, how it works, sort of what's level. And some potential, potential opportunities, and then how we wanna strategize that going forward, I think that's smart.
I'll just say this, the longer we push it out, the more money we're missing out on. So. Cause I think we're all a yes.
I, with that, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna ask this differently, can you also, is that a county-wide? Like, what would be the reach? I'm okay with that, actually.
Okay.
Um.
Cause then we can.
Yeah, I, I think that most people have a lodging tax plan, most of our cities have a lodging tax plan.
So this one would just be for, yeah, so, so we're not, we're not, we're not, uh, negotiating with cities on parsing out anything, right?
No, many of them already have something, or something similar, but, um, we do have the breakdown, too, of what all of our communities have and what they're pulling it in on and what they're using it for, so we can bring that as well.
Okay. They might not all be doing short-term rental tax and registration now, so we could certainly bring that up at an adca conversation as well.
Yep, attached to the specific use.
Like an FJC.
Yes. Apparently, we're supposed to bring them all at one time.
You want all of your money.
We've heard some of that feedback recently.
Oh, my goodness.
You should be careful with that.